The Common Council meeting of Tuesday, October 19th, 2021, and ask the clerk to call the roll.
All right, Alder Carter? Alder Carter?
Present.
Thank you. Alder Curry?
Here.
Alder Evers?
Here.
Alder Figueroa Cole?
Here.
Alder Foster?
Here.
Alder Furman?
Present.
Alder Halverson?
Present.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
Present.
Alder Heck?
Here.
Alder Lummer is excused. Alder Martin?
Here.
Alder Miyazi?
Present.
Alder Vervier?
Here.
Alder Vitterver?
Present.
Alder Wehelier?
Here.
Alder Abbas?
Present.
Alder Alvarez?
Here.
Alder Benford?
Present.
Okay, and I still don't see Alder. Oh, there's Alder Bennett. Alder Bennett?
Here.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you. Alder Evers?
You know, my mind be maybe playing tricks with me, but I don't think the clerk has for Alder Conklin.
Alder Conklin is excused.
I'm sorry, yes, she is excused. Sorry.
Thank you, Alder Evers.
Thank you.
All right, quorum having been achieved, I'll ask the tech staff to give us the meeting instructions, please.
All right, welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members of the Common Council, if you're able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you're able, please activate your video when you're speaking. In this meeting, panelists have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Panelists also have the ability to add pronouns after their names if they choose. Please do not alter the current naming convention, simply add text after your name. Please use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Staff, please use the raise hand feature when you're asked a question. The chair will do their best to call on council members in the order in which hands are raised. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. Staff will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the council, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. Mayor, floor is yours.
Thank you. Just a few opening notes, as usual, just reminding us that we're all here to do our best for the city's business and that we should discuss policy, not people. I'll remind you, just as a refresher, to address your remarks to the chair and to ask everyone, staff, elders, members of the public here with us tonight, to be respectful in your comments and to please not use profanity. President Abbas, a suspension of the rules, please.
Suspension of the rule, suspend rule, move suspension of the rules, suspend rule 2.0 for Order of Businesses, 2.05 Introduction of Businesses, 2.2 for Ordinances, and 2.25 Resolution for Items designated on Agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded to suspend the rules, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of suspension of the rules? Seeing no objection, those rules are suspended for items designated on the agenda. We'll come to item number one of our honoring resolutions, Legisstar 67783, Resolution Honoring Mary Mullen. And I will turn, please, to Alder Figueroa Cole to make the motion and read the resolution.
I make the motion to honor Mary Mullen. Just a quick.
Moved and seconded, Alder Figueroa Cole?
Okay, so first of all, I wanted to say, a couple of weeks ago, we had a big celebration of the park to celebrate Mary. She wasn't aware of that happening. So a large group of community members came and surprised her. So it was quite a celebration with food, good spirits, and I really enjoyed that. So this kind of was born from that interaction. So I'm just going to read the resolution. Thank you. So honoring Mary Mullen for over 50 years of service and commitment to the Duns Marsh neighborhood. Whereas Mary Mullen is a founding member of the Duns Marsh Neighborhood Association and advocated for renters' rights, ensuring access to all residents. And whereas Mary has given her time as poll worker during the elections over the last 50 years, and whereas Mary has, was an advocate for the city purchase of the 19.3-acre Marlboro Park and the neighborhood desires for the relocation of the shelter by path, wild areas, and community gardens. And whereas Mary, in 1970, founded the Marlboro Park Community Garden, which today holds over 160 plots, bringing people and food from different cultures, languages, and backgrounds together. And whereas Mary is an activist, folk fan musician, avid gardener, photographer, and writer, and has applied her skills to the betterment of the Duns Marsh neighborhood and its people. And whereas Mary Mullen documented the history of Duns Marsh in her book, in her own words. And whereas she has sought funding for the installation of a neighborhood sign, a little free library, and a mosaic art project for the pedestrian bridge and the underpass. And whereas every year, Mary sponsors the Make Music Madison event in the Duns Marsh area. And whereas Mary has diligently captured all the content and documenting via photos and stories the beauty of the neighborhood in the neighborhood's social media accounts. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Madison commends and thanks Mary Mullen for her many hours and years of work to ensure Duns Marsh is a welcoming community that embraces people from different ways of life and a community that values the protection of green spaces for the enjoyment of everyone. Thank you, Mary, for everything you've done for Duns Marsh. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Alder, and thank you, Mary. You're getting a virtual round of applause. I'd like to turn the mic zoom over to you, Mary, to receive the honoring resolution.
Hi, I'm Mary Mullen. I live at 4337 Milford Road, Madison, Wisconsin. And as I start my remarks this way, I wonder how many times I've appeared before the city council, city committees, and the county too, to speak up for my neighborhood, quite a few. I always do think ahead. I guess it's the former schoolteacher in me. Well, thanks to my Alder, Janet Figueroa Cole, for thinking of me and for sharing the planned resolution at the 50th anniversary of the Marlboro Community Garden on September 11th. She read it in both Spanish and English at the celebration. And over half the 60 people who were there spoke Spanish, so it was good that she did that. Our festivities were also translated into Hmong for one of the Hmong gardeners who was present. I should also be thanking the Marlboro Park Community Garden Committee, who met secretly without me to think of ways to set this in motion, according to Janet. The committee members, who I think were mainly responsible, are Amy Bogan, Percy Mather, Barbara Park, and Angelica Munoz Medina. As then, in my response, I want to say that here, that without the action of many other people, including those in public office like yourselves, or city staff, most of the accomplishments in this resolution wouldn't have happened. As well, over the 50 years, actions by many Duns Marsh residents kept the Duns Marsh Neighborhood Association going, contributed to the history book of the neighborhood, in our own words, the best of the Duns Marsh news that was published in 1990, with the help of the county. They also made the case for Marlboro Park and for setting aside the space for Marlboro Community Garden. And I believe it was the first garden approved in a developed city park, and that was in 1976. We also got the Duns Marsh Neighborhood Sign, established two little free libraries, and worked on the mosaic projects designed by artists Elizabeth Doyle and Marcia Yap in connection with the Verona Road project. So thanks to all the Duns Marsh neighborhood people for their interest in making the neighborhood a better place. And to you, Mayor Satya, and all of you city council members for your recognitions. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mary. It's a well-deserved recognition. And we have registered in support wishing to speak Joanne Kelly.
Thank you. It is with much gratitude that I support the Resolution 67783 to honor Mary Mullen. She loves the Duns Marsh neighborhood. And we can see the results of her love and commitment to our neighborhood all around us. She has accomplished so much in the neighborhood, but rather than listing her accomplishments, and you've heard them already, I want to take a moment to describe a walk my family and I take that has extraordinary legacy created in our neighborhood. We start off by walking through our garden plot in the vibrant, colorful Marlboro Community Gardens, where we have many languages spoken and exchange smiles with our other gardeners. Then we head to the soccer field, where our daughter played soccer as a child, and where an hill crane come to feed each spring and summer, adding their unique calls to the sounds of our neighborhood. At the soccer field, we walk along paths through a beautiful restored prairie. Flowers are so tall that you can't see over them. You're in a tunnel of flowers and bees and butterflies. It's magical. Finally, we reach the park pavilion, where our neighbors and other gardeners come together for meetings, celebrations, and projects. We bask in the sense of community that we have built together. And we have Mary Mullen to thank for all these things. Now, as you had just heard from her, she's always the first person to point out that there are other people that have been involved. But we honor Mary because she devoted 50 years of her life's energy, talent, and skills. Because Mary has actively loved the Duns Marsh neighborhood for over 50 years. It is with much gratitude to Mary that I support the resolution to honor her. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary, you may also want to know that we have registrants from Manona, Cameri Moya, and also Onalaska, Astro Frost, have registered in support of this.
Would be my sister.
It's always good to have family.
Thank you.
So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording an enthusiastic unanimous vote in favor of the honoring resolution? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote. And thank you again, Mary, for all of your service to your neighborhood and our city. That takes us to our second honoring resolution, Legisstar 67913, Honoring Community Shares of Wisconsin. And I think, without objection, we'll take the motion from Alder Curry and the second from Alder Vitterver. And I'll hand it over to Alder Curry to read the resolution.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas Community Shares of Wisconsin is celebrating 50 years of bringing donors and nonprofits together to address social, economic, and environmental issues. And whereas its member nonprofits are on the front lines in Dane County and throughout Wisconsin to protect our rights and build a safe and sustainable future for us all. And whereas Community Shares of Wisconsin was originally founded in 1971 as the Madison Sustaining Fund and raised funds to bail anti-war protesters out of jail. And whereas in 1972, the Madison Sustaining Fund started raising funds through public sector workplace giving campaigns. And whereas in 1988, Madison Sustaining Fund merged with aid to Wisconsin organizations and became known as Community Shares of Wisconsin. And whereas Community Shares of Wisconsin started supporting LGBTQI groups in 1980. And whereas Community Shares of Wisconsin started supporting environmental groups in 1990. And whereas Community Shares of Wisconsin started the Inspiring Voices Program to support groups run by the BIPOC community in 2016.
And whereas Community Shares of Wisconsin started the Big Share Online Giving Day in 2015, which raised over $756,000 in 2021 and now serves 70 nonprofit members. And whereas Community Shares of Wisconsin marked its 50th anniversary in 2021 by recognizing longtime volunteers and leaders with Anniversary Backyard Heroes Awards, including Andy Geisler, Catherine Kimport, Richard Salz, Janet Zimmerman, Denise Matika, Nicole Gottheef, Joan Karen, Mary Ann Morton, Brian Yuccums, Nancy Vu, Emily Dickman, Winona Wolfe, Bernie Hose, Denise Jess, Charlie Daniel, Harold Gates, Madison Community Foundation, Wagner CPAs, Chad LaFlash, Rick Stork, Capital Center Market, Willie Street Co-op, John Quinlan, John Urban, Veronica Figueroa Velas, Heidi Rudd, Katie Beilfus, Carol Terrell. And whereas Community Shares of Wisconsin marked its 50th anniversary in 2021 by presenting the Changemaker Award to Sally Sund, Family Advocate Award to Dr. Armando Ibarra, Summit Credit Union Award to Liesel Blockstein, Community Leadership Award to Danny Richall, Willie Street Co-op Award to Linda Sundberg, and Civil Rights Defender Award to Timothy Muth. And whereas, Community Shares of Wisconsin marked its 50th anniversary in 2021 by presenting the Collaboration Award to Dane County Time Bank, Freedom, Inc., and Urban Triage, who demonstrated the power of collaboration with their coordinated efforts to lead Madison's Black Lives Matter movement in the summer of 2020 in response to the murder of George Floyd. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and Madison Common Council recognize that Community Shares of Wisconsin has made an enormous and invaluable contribution to Madison and the many people from all walks of life who have benefited directly from being participants and project recipients, and express their gratitude and continued support. Thank you. And I believe we have Sheri Dubial here to receive the honoring resolution. She's in the attendees, if we can promote her.
I am not seeing her in the attendees.
Oh, she's, she was.
I just promoted.
There you go.
Okay.
Sheri?
Yes, I'm here. Sorry about that. I use Zoom 20 times a day, and you'd think I'd use it right now. Hi there. I'm Dubial, Executive Director at Community Shares of Wisconsin. And I want to thank all of you, especially Alder Curry and Alder Vitterver, for making the motion and want to let you know that Community Shares of Wisconsin has been your local funder of social and environmental justice causes for 50 years. This is our 50th anniversary, and we're very proud to have 70 nonprofit members and a 76-member Board of Directors, which is quite an achievement on its own. And we have a membership-directed structure, and so all of our member groups do have a seat on our board. That's what makes our board so big. And so this grassroots structure has been part of our history for the entire 50 years and continues to be part of who we are today. And we're so very proud to be part of the Madison community and so happy to receive this honorary resolution from the City of Madison today. So thank you very much to Mayor Rhodes Conway and to the entire city council for this honor. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for your leadership and all the good work that Community Shares does. So it has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording an enthusiastic unanimous vote in favor of the honoring resolution? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote. And thank you again, Sheri, and thanks to all of your very large board. That brings us to item number three, which is Legisstar 67915, an honoring resolution for Operation Fresh Start. I will turn it over to Alder Benford to make the initial motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Moved to adopt.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded. Alder Benford, would you please read the resolution?
Thank you, Mayor, for the deep honor and privilege. And Mayor, speaking of privilege, could I ask for the personal privilege just to say a couple of words before I read the resolution?
Please do.
I worked at Operation Fresh Start on two occasions. And while you will hear me read about their tremendous impacts on youth, young adults in our community, Operation Fresh Start is and forever will be a life transformative experience that I carry in my heart in my service to others. So whereas Operation Fresh Start is celebrating 50 years serving more than 8,000 emerging adults in Dane County, and whereas Operation Fresh Start was founded in 1970 by retired police officer Jack Osceiras, who saw young people being picked up on the streets with nothing in place to help them move forward or succeed. And whereas, with the help of several community sponsors, he started a program where young people would earn money building affordable homes during the day and attend classes at East High School at night. And whereas Operation Fresh Start views every young person as an asset to our community and recognizes the barriers that can get in the way of that. And whereas, through education, mentoring, and employment training... Excuse me, I lost my screen. Their end goal is to help youth achieve a family-sustaining career and/or go on to pursue higher education. And whereas, Operation Fresh Start graduates walk away with a high school diploma and driver's license, the top two most required qualifications for employers, as well as other credentials to improve their resume, including certifications in First Aid, CPR, OSHA 10, and Department of Labor-recognized pre-apprenticeship readiness training. And whereas, Operation Fresh Start participants also give back to the community, building affordable homes for low-income families and completing conservation work in city and county parks. And whereas, after program completion, staff continue to support graduates as they transition into post-secondary education and/or self-sustaining employment. And whereas, Operation Fresh Start is working to ensure successful outcomes for current and future generations of low-income individuals and people of color in our community. And whereas, their programming focuses on young adults from very low-income families. 73% of participants served in 2020. And people of color, 80% of participants, served in 2020. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and Madison Common Council recognize that Operation Fresh Start has made enormous and invaluable contribution to Madison and the many people from all walks of life who have benefited directly from participating from being participants and project recipients, and express their gratitude and continued support. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. And we have Greg Markle with us to receive the honoring resolution. And Greg also is in the attendees.
Might take a second to have him join us in the panelist section here.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Brian Alder Benford, for this wonderful resolution. In 50 years, you accumulate quite a few "whereas's." And I think the heart and soul is that Operation Fresh Start, from the beginning founder of Jack, the police officer who just took the time to talk to young people. It's always been about the value added and understanding that young people in our community, we work with young people aged 16 to 24, have value. And if we can help them understand that they have value, then they have a lot to give to the community and make the community better. And if they can really understand that they have value, then they can change their trajectory for their life to something better than what they thought was possible for them. I've been with Fresh Start for about 10 years, and I knew this from the beginning. About five years ago, it became extremely clear. About five years ago, Madison was experiencing a torrential flood, and much of the east side was underwater. And me and other Fresh Start staff and every young person at Fresh Start went out and started sandbagging, and kept sandbagging, and kept sandbagging, and kept sandbagging. And people from their nice east side homes would come and collect the sandbags and say thank you. And I was working alongside a young person who didn't have a home to go back to that night. But he was there sandbagging, and he was happy. And he was probably the happiest I ever saw him. We left with blisters, but we didn't care. The fact that he was able to give to the community and that the community at that moment recognized that these young people have value and have something to give. And that's the heart of Fresh Start, is that understanding that the young person who some in the community might choose to cross the street to avoid, that they have value. And if we recognize that value together as a community, and we thank the city for being a long-term partner in this work, that we can achieve great things. And most importantly, that those emerging adults can achieve really great things. So thank you so much for the resolution. I accept it on behalf of the board of Operation Fresh Start, the wonderful staff that I get to work with, but mostly I accept it on behalf of the emerging adults we work with, that this resolution is recognizing their value to the community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Greg, and thanks for the great work that you and your whole team do. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had to add my voice to the accolades given to Operation Fresh Start. Matter of fact, that was the first job I held when I moved to Madison in 2005. And I worked for them for about three years. And it's amazing to see what transpires over there under Operation Fresh Start. So I absolutely echo what Alder Benford said in terms of the great work and the tremendous commitment the staff have. And to see those young people who society had tossed aside really thrive through that encouragement. And so I want to echo and congratulate the staff and also the director for the work that they have done. Kudos.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figueroa Cole?
I couldn't, I cannot just let this one go by. Operation Fresh Start has touched my life and my family's life multiple times throughout my 30 years here in Madison. And I'm so grateful for their existence and for all the work that they do on how they prepare these young adults to be accomplished members of society. I've been on the graduations, and as a young adult here from, you know, 27 years ago, with a young, with a young baby and having, struggling to make a day-to-day. We, Operation Fresh Start was there for us on the forces of our first home. And I'm always be grateful until, you know, forever, for their programming and their passion that they put into it. So thank you for all you do and continue to do. You guys are one of my, literally like my favorite nonprofit organization, to be honest with you. So thank you. Thank you for all the hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Alder. President Abbas?
Yeah, I will be very brief, as some of my colleagues echo what I want to say and also the resolution says clearly about their great work. Also really acknowledge their great work on near east and north side and really connecting the community with resources and workforce for young kids. I also want to tell Operation Fresh Start, my house, 1979, is built by all of us, Operation Fresh Start. So thank you for making this house and keeping us all comfortable. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Alder. And thank you again, Greg, for joining us. I want to add my thanks for the incredible work that Fresh Start teams have done for the city over the years and for the great partnership, particularly on the conservation teams and the partnership that we have between you and city engineering. And I want to thank you again publicly for the award that you gave city engineering at your 50th anniversary event. I really appreciate that partnership. And so with that, it's been moved and seconded. it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording an enthusiastic unanimous vote in favor of the honoring resolution? Seeing no objection, we will record that vote and thank you again, Greg. And that will bring us to our early public comment. And we have several folks registered for early public comment. Starting with, and I'll just remind folks who are registered for early public comment, if you could please tell us what item you are registered on before you make your comment, that will help us orient to where we are in the agenda. So our first public comment is from Alexander Wilburn, District Two, to be followed by someone from Reshaping Madison Together Collective. And please, you need to register with an individual name. And we'll let it happen this time, but please let us know who you are when you speak. Thank you. Alex?
Hi, can you hear me well?
We can.
Thank you very much. I am here for early public comments. I believe the budget is item six. I'm here to speak, well, actually in opposition of the budget. Yep, that's the budget opposition and particularly the police spending. Number one, we need to end mounted police once and for all. Whatever retroactive reasoning for using police horses, that's fine. There's a better way to go about surveilling crowds or making police presence known, them having them being on horses which were used, you know, to to catch slaves, which was one of the original reasons for police was to catch runaway slaves and to run poor and poor people out of, out of, poor and mentally ill people without housing out of town. So we don't need a new police program. I believe that we do not need a new unmanned drone either. They still have one and it doesn't work. I, I mean, teachers all the time have to buy their own upgraded technologies or their own their own supplies. So I, I, I think that, that the city, the state, the people should not be paying for a new surveillance drone for the police. I am also against a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars to be used to be purchased for ammunition. I assume it'd be for training and for also when officers shoot each other when they're trying to chase people down on State Street at midnight, which was what happened on last Sunday, I believe, and officers shot another officer. So just, uh, that was a big sign to me that we, we really need to stop giving so much money to the police department. I would also like to say, you know, wanting to add a new position, giving them a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, having someone, you know, the data informed, you know, collecting data, looking over police uh, conduct and all of that, you know, you want to do that? Perfectly fine. Let's not make them a police officer under the police. Why? Because police unions are inherently corrupt. The police unions are corrupt. They're institutions of white supremacy. They're full of very many white supremacists. A lot of the Trump union people back, like people that are very, very right-wing and right-wing is just a media term for closer and closer to actively calling for white supremacists and white supremacy uh, policy that's very overt. And the unions carry that out. Lots of the unions backed Trump and all of that. So absolutely no new police officers. They would all be corrupted, even if they want to be a good person. Even if they think that they could, you know, be be a good asset or be a harm-reductive force to what the policing is. The unions are inherently corrupt. Every time the city makes, it's just so frustrating. Every time the city makes renew the deal with these police unions, you're renewing a contract with with effectively, you know, the mafia, the mob. There were police officers that took place that took part in or issued their support for the violent mob that attacked the US Capitol on January sixth. There was a data leak showing that the Oath Keepers, a white supremacist group that masquerades as a constitutionalist group. There was a data leak of the Oath Keepers, you know, drives and USA, it was on USA Today and found that there were former military people trying to sign up for Oath Keepers and, you know, there are former military, you know, in the policing system that are deputies in the jail. I'm just pointing out all of these connections to white supremacist terror groups from the police unions that the city is making contracts with. So, you know, you want to collect, they want to collect data, you think that'll that'll help make policing more humane, more moral. Collect all the data you want. Don't do it with a police union contract. It will only further corrupt the the effort for positive reform is to pretend that the police unions aren't corrupt. So yeah, don't increase the police budget. And I encourage everyone here listening to this call to stand up for justice for Tony Robinson, the current police chief.
That's five minutes.
Okay, well.
That's your time. Thank you. And I do not see anybody in the registration list registered as Reshaping Madison Together Collective. Is that correct, staff?
Nope, they are here.
Yep.
Okay, go ahead then. And to be followed by Megan Spielbauer Sandate.
Good evening, Common Council. Reshaping Madison Together, it's a collective group of activists, different organizations and groups advocating for those who are voiceless, for those who are screaming out in their streets, in our communities for resources, right? Resources that we need, that we see every day with the increase in crimes. Every day in the city of Madison and surrounding cities in the state of Wisconsin and nationwide, we are seeing that the system is not working, that this increasing police officers and police budget, police departments growing, it's not reducing any crime activity in our neighborhoods. And year after year, the city of Madison has funded millions and millions and millions of dollars, a quarter of, over a quarter of the city budget. It's, it's trying to go to the police department and that is unacceptable when our communities need funds for resources so that people can actually thrive and have opportunities, have safe spaces where they can have many different activities to be in a good pathway to be successful in this life. Many people are out here committing crimes that are easily preventable if we had the right resources, the right centers, the right advocates helping to guide these people through those pathways that they need, that they're screaming for. More than ever in this whole year, we have seen how the police brutality in our communities, especially black and brown communities, it's out of control. These police officers are not protecting us. Here in the city of Madison, we just seen an incident that just happened. What is it? Not even a week ago, a week, a little bit over a week ago, when in State, on State Street, the busiest area in the city of Madison, on a, on one of the busiest nights with a badger game happening, homecoming celebrations from different high schools and many other people that attends this area every Saturday night. We seen a violent event where the community and innocent youth was put at risk by Madison police officers. They shot themselves. They lied to the community for a whole week until yesterday, the department, the Department of Criminal Justice was able to tell us the truth that many of us already knew had happened because we heard from witnesses. We heard what happened from witnesses. And they were trying to cover this up, but you cannot cover the sun with a finger. And this is something that we must all address together, work together as a city, as community members to make sure that our citizens and our youth are protected. Because with violence like this, we're not giving, no, we're not giving them the right example. Not even a light at the end of the tunnel when life is already harsh, especially after a pandemic that hit us all hard. The US Supreme Court has made it clear that law enforcement agencies are not required to provide protection to the citizens who are forced to pay the police for their so-called services. In the cases, DeShanny versus Winnebago, in Town of Castle Rock versus Gonzalez, the Supreme Court has ruled that police that police agencies are not obligated to provide protection of citizens. In other words, police are well, are well within the rights to pick and choose when to intervene to protect the lives and property of others, even when a threat is apparent. In many cases, domestic abuse victims have restraining orders against their perpetrators and we are not protected. So enough is enough. We must not fund any, we must, we must not even fund a penny towards the police department, let alone eighty-something millions, millions of dollars that could be used for our communities, for our black and brown communities, for youth children. Everybody has one. We can work together. We can make this happen. We can be leading by example. We can reshape Madison together if we really put our hearts towards that. We can really do it together. But if we continue to fund the police, the only thing that we're doing is creating more crimes. We're creating more violence in the community against those who are screaming for these resources, for this education, the health that we need, the everything that, we can all work together on a list of things that our community can be benefit from if we start create, if we start funding those resources. And then we will see the reduction of crimes in the city of Madison. Before that, and if we continue to fund the police, I don't think that they will be here anytime soon. And it's more needed than ever. We cannot continue to go through every other day seeing the news that there's a robbery going on here, an armed robbery going on over there, a car death happening this over here. We cannot continue that path. We were just rated as one of the best cities to live in the US, but that is not true. That is not true for.
Madam Mayor, that's five minutes.
Thank you. That's your time, but can you please tell us your name? Can you unmute them? So they can identify themselves?
You should have a prompt to unmute yourself.
And this is Reshaping Madison Together. Thank you so much.
But I'm asking for the name of the individual who's speaking.
Looks like they're no longer with us.
Right, thank you. So I just for the, just with like a sense of the body, if there's any objection. I don't think it's proper to have organizations register to speak in the future without an individual attached to them. I don't think that follows our rules around lobbying. And I think that if it was a different organization, we'd all be really uncomfortable with that. And so I, I think in the future, I'd like to ask staff to make an effort to reach out to people and get an individual name. Otherwise, we won't be taking testimony from people just identified as organizations. Alder Bennett?
Um, two things. One, I think that was Joanna. And two, from my understanding, when you register to speak, you can register under an organization.
You can, you can say that you are representing an organization, Alder, but I don't think it's proper to register without an individual's name.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think just consider some other organizations in our community that could do the same if we set the precedent and not identify the individuals involved. All right, so our next registrant is Megan Spielbauer Sandate of District Four, to be followed by Anthony Cooper.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so my name's Megan. I wanted to speak in opposition to item number six, but before I get to that, I just want to say that while I understand the mayor's point about identifying folks, I would also caution against the fact that some people are more at risk, especially when you announce where people live sometimes during the meetings and where people, yeah, where people reside, not announcing someone's name and also the persecution of being an individual stating an opinion that goes against the white stream puts people at risk. So I think that should be something to take into consideration. But I'll move along to my opposition to budget item number six or agenda item number six, the budget. I just wanted to say briefly that I believe that the city of Madison should be putting its money towards people and instead of putting its money towards things like police who are consistently proving to the communities, particularly the black and brown communities, that they are not in support of them, that they're not here to care for them, that they're here to pierce, keep them, to harm them, to endanger them, and to even kill them. We've seen, yesterday was Tony Robinson's twenty-sixth birthday. Tony Robinson was murdered by Officer Matthew Kenny, who is still on the Madison Police Department. He has not been brought to justice. He is still teaching and still instructing new police officers. I think it's horrendous that this continues to happen and that we're continuing to see this violence against black and brown folks. We can see with K. Tron, who was accused of shooting a Madison police officer the other week that other registrants have mentioned, he is still sitting in a jail cell while the Madison Police Department is finally telling the community the truth that they in fact were the ones to shoot, one officer was the one who shot the other. And yet this boy is still in a jail cell, still facing the issues of our bail system and the punishment or the harms of incarceration in the Dane County Jail. So I'd like to see the city of Madison invest more in its resources, more in early education, more in housing, more in employment, more in community centers, more in essentially in healthcare, more in anything that essentially has been shown other than law enforcement, because law enforcement has not been shown to reduce crime. It hasn't been shown to actually help people and to invest its resources in things that have been proven to be both helpful to the community and also reduce crime as such a big concern. Also, just to speak to the fact that it starts with a budget. Every year it's easy to get caught up in this is the current operation. So this is what we spent last year. This is what we'll spend this year. Maybe we'll add a little more for inflation. But priorities change and our priorities of a city have changed. The public has shown that our priorities as a city have changed. And it means taking a look at the yearly budget, what might be considered a mundane thing, what might be considered as boring, as line items, and drastically looking at the ways that continuing to invest the same amount of resources into things like police departments have been proven to not work is causing our city to continue to be one of the most dangerous places for black and brown people here. So I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Anthony Cooper of District Nineteen, representing Focused Interruption Coalition.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Your Honor. I said, thank you, Your Honor. Sorry about that. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, one, I just want to just kind of talk a little bit as far as, one, we need to be able to stop the violence that's happening in our community and also to be able to mention my support and about the GPRS and being able to build out strategies with public health. And if anyone had questions or anyone had questions or just to be able to just talk about what GPRS is. And also to ask people if they wanted to even come to, as we're talking about GPRS and what we want to do to be able to stop the violence in our community. This is also an invite to, on Tuesday, October twenty-sixth, at six thirty PM, we're having a GPRS discussion. And we're just trying to make sure that we can have more conversations with the community and stop, stopping the violence that's happening in our community. As we are able to expand programs for our community and also being able to work with more grassroots organizations in our community and the more that we're able to partner to disrupt the violence that's happening in our community as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all of our early registrants. Are there questions for any of them? Alder Bennett?
I have a question for Alex. I don't know if they're here still.
Do we have Alex Wilburn here still?
Looks like we do. Alex, you should be unmuted.
I am unmuted.
I am unmuted. I'm ready for a question.
Hi, Alex Wilburn. Um, I know you, um, mentioned the, um, mounted patrol officers. I was wondering if you could speak more to that. Do you have experience with mounted patrol officers?
So, the only experience I have with mounted parole patrol officers are being a member of society. I grew up in Iowa. We had mounted patrol. Um, and then seeing them again here more frequently because of, I, I, you know, seeing them walk on State Street. Um, I find that it is a, a waste of money in my perspective. Uh, from the research I've done, um, it seems like it's very much backed by the uh, sort of back the blueberry, uh, police supporters, but not people that support accountability for police officers who, uh, you know, violate laws or violate protocol. Um, and very much so, the practice here in Madison may have, you know, stopped and restarted and stopped and restarted, uh, from my brief research of it, but the history of using mounted patrol, of using horses uh, comes from being on a, you know, slave plantations. It comes from the patrols being, you know, chasing down on their horsebacks with their dogs. Another practice that we still use, using dogs, um, to catch black people. Um, I believe the Border Patrol was just instructed to stop using horses because there was a, a, an image of a Border Patrol officer, uh, whipping a, a black Haitian wreck, a, a seeking asylum, uh, in our country. And then, um, you know, that image going viral was a catalyst for, uh, you know, Biden saying to end the use of that there. So let's not just stop with Border Patrol. Let's set, let's set up new precedents for, uh, and, and end that at the city level, that use at the city level as well. Thank you very much. Uh, Alderman Bennett, I really appreciate you asking me a question. It's very much appreciated.
Sure. Um, can I ask you one more?
Absolutely.
Cool. Um, so I know that you were speaking towards the um, new add-on of the Innovation Director and, or Police Reform and Innovation Director for data. Um, and you were speaking towards like how, I guess you did not support that or at least if it, if we were to add that on for it to be moved to a different agency because data can be corrupted. Um, am I reading that, am I understanding you correctly? And if so, like, where do you think we should have a data, uh, um, person to analyze police data?
I appreciate that question because, um, you know, upon reading, you know, the, I read, uh, uh, the new chief, uh, Sean Barnes, uh, you know, the, the agency request, uh, requesting, you know, wanting to be a leading police, uh, you know, force in reform and adding these new positions of, of accountability and and, uh, uh, collecting data. Now, I mean, we have a public, uh, you know, public health, we have civil rights departments. We have other departments that can be given jobs of, of auditing, uh, the police practices. I mean, you just have to have the police, uh, comply with that. Um, with the departments complying with the inter, uh, interdepartmental, uh, work. Uh, data can be corrupt, corrupted. I have a bachelor's from advertising in, in Marquette. Um, I, I worked, I worked in digital marketing. I worked for, uh, the, the Capital Times, Lee Enterprises. And, um, you can make data look in many different ways depending on what you show, how you show it, uh, what you choose to, you know, study, how you choose to study it. There's no data that is purely quantitative, right? Because we're all inherently qualit, eh, you know, we're all having our, our bias in, input into how we design collecting data as well. Um, but from an advertising perspective, um, uh, there's definitely quote-unquote leading data that digital advertisers are always saying, this is the leading data. They show you these not certain numbers and they look great. Uh, and so you are like, oh, I should buy that product, but it, eh, those, those measurements don't accurately get to get you to the goals that you are, are, uh, uh, trying to, trying to attain. So it's not necessarily that I think that the aggregation of data, the aggregation of, you know, qualitative reports and study of, of the, of police, of police, police conduct, of all sorts of numbers and everything. Um, but yeah, uh, not have it be someone that's going to be under, going to be paid through the police department, not going to be, uh, beholden to the police unions, right? It's, uh, it was a big police union, I believe, uh, issue. Every time a black person, every time any person of any color is killed by police, the police unions very much, very, are always backing officers. And that way, police unions have a lot of lobbying power. Uh, and they're often lobbying for punitive justice, you know, um. The unions are inherently corrupt, so continuing to hire people that then sign these, these contracts with this corrupt union, whether that position is supposed to be good, whether the intent is good of that position, whether the intent of the person being hired for that position is good, um, that, that action is in, is a wrong action of being then part of the police structure. So, you know, public health, uh, civil rights departments, um, I think would be better equipped, better handled, better handling that. Um, and they would not be, right? Like, if you give someone a job under police, like, they're not ever going to want to get rid of that money then, right? So now we're in this other, like, if we're creating new jobs to, to stop, uh, so to, to, so we can start ending these, you know, these issues, like, we can't build them into the structure that is inherently flawed. Um, so yeah, those are just a couple of options that when reading that, I was like, you know, maybe there's a right intention there, but the action there is wrong. So I really appreciate that question as well. Five minutes is a bit rough as I tend to ramble. Thank you very much, Alderman, Your Honor Bennett.
Of course. Thank you. I think it's a really important thought to discuss about intent versus impact. You know, intent of like, um, gathering and presenting data versus the impact of, you know, if someone's being paid for and funded through the police department, if they would want to present data in a negative way. Um, so thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney, did you have questions for registrants?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor. Is, um, Anthony Cooper still available for questions?
Let's see.
Hello, Alder McKinney.
Okay, thank you, Anthony. Um, I, I, I have a couple of questions and one of the questions, and I'm asking for your experience and from your, um, um, your place of being on the ground. Um, when we talk about reducing or eliminating the police budget, could you speak about the, um, direct correlation to ending the, uh, the spree of violence in, in the community safe? Could you speak to that? And you, and you might add, uh, gun violence as well, but, but, but diverting those funds and eliminating those funds, will the community actually be safer? Is that a, that you can answer?
Yeah, I, I believe that's something definitely I can answer. I don't necessarily, and I've, I've said this publicly before, I don't think necessarily it's a thing of eliminating the police funds. I think, of, of course, and I've said this before as, as well, we have to be able to look at other ways of being able to strategize and to support grassroots community, uh, grassroots organizations and also, um, uh, other community organizations that are to help and build the community. Some of that stuff may be alongside, uh, of the, the police, but then some of it will not be because we all know the history behind that. Um, I think there is definitely a way of being able to, um, I guess, look at it in a couple, in a couple of different ways. One, we need more support for the, for the community, hands down. It has, that has to happen. Um, um, that's, that's, uh, but also making sure that we're not just focusing, a lot of times I think there's a lot of talk about just working with, with, uh, with youth. We also have to be able to focus on the whole family and work with organizations that who are working with the, the whole family as well. The, the police, um, the police themselves, they have a job to do. That job would be carried out. That job has been carried out for years. And there are different ways of how things can happen. Something that what, um, I, I do love about, uh, um, um, from having great conversations with our new chief, he's looking at different ways instead of arresting, uh, you know, outside of just arresting. He knows that we cannot arrest our way out of, out of the problems that what we're having in our community. That is not going to work, has not worked, will never work. Um, um, so that's, you know, that's, that's, but also they can't do it by themselves, right? But then also we can't do it by ourselves as, as community organizations. We need to be able to, um, build stronger together as well as being able to talk to, um, not only foundations, but also, um, um, business owners and, and, and apartment owners. Because again, it takes the community to really build. Everyone has a part in it. That's, you, you know, uh, yeah, because we, yeah, everyone has a part in it. So hopefully I answered the question.
My final foul, my follow, my final follow-up question is, um, with the current leadership with our police department, specifically Chief Barnes, do you feel a sense of collaboration? What is your, your sense of, and you kind of touched on it, but I really want you to say a little bit more about where you see the direction of public safety and what that means in the city of Madison.
Um, well, I do feel there is more, um, collaboration. I do feel that where, you know, um, I mean, we cannot talk about just law enforcement, we have to be able to talk about public health as well as grassroots organizations and other long, longstanding, um, nonprofits that have been around as well. This is, I feel with our, um, Chief Barnes, he is definitely trying to look outside the box. He's, he's meeting, meeting with people, but it's, it goes, as a matter of fact, I had a meeting with him earlier and he agrees to this. I hope he doesn't mind me saying this, um, but it's the fact that where it's one, it's one thing to just have a meeting, but also now we have to talk about what is the action that we can provide behind that. Um, and, and, and to making sure that we're just, we're, that we're not just meeting for the heck of it. We're, we're actually aligning things to say, okay, hey, how can we help our families? How can we do this? How can, how, uh, is there, is there a way of not just looking at, um, uh, officer as a officer, but just like, is there a way of not just looking at this young black man as, uh, or, or a young black boy, as just some boy that, you know, that doesn't have much to offer? Because again, um, it's something, I don't remember the, the, the person's name that had mentioned. You know, when we look at the things that what, I'm not even talking about the, the, the shooting that happened with, uh, on State Street. I'm just talking about just in general, it's just the way how things are looking, the way how things are seen as though, eh, and seen and are at times of, of being very targeted towards our black and brown people. We have to, we have to dig deeper into that, right? But then also, the, us digging deeper into it, have to be able to confront things on both sides and being able to grow from that. Um, I can start talking all day, so I'm
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Not a problem.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm complete, um, with.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. Any further questions for any of our early registrants? Seeing none, um, we will move on to the consent agenda, President Abbas.
Thank you. Alright, at this time, a concern agenda will be moved with a recommended action listed for each item except number one item which have registered wishing to speak, number two item which require extraordinary roll call vote and are not included on the consent agenda by unanimous consent, number three item without persons have separated for out for discussion debate purposes. Agenda item number five sits at public hearing, uh, items. The following items are extra majority item. Extra majority vote items will be recorded as unanimous votes unless a roll call of exclusion is requested. Agenda item number twenty-five, legislative file number six, seven, four, six, three. Authorizing City of Madison behalf of Dean County Continuum of CARE C O C to accept twenty-four thousand, one hundred thirty-two dollar in addition to E H H funds for the State of Wisconsin Department of Administrative, requires fifteen votes. Agenda item number thirty-one, legislative file number six, seven, six, one, seven. Amending the twenty-twenty-one Sustainability Improvement Capital Budget Project to add ninety thousand of grant funding, approving the City of Madison application to the U.S. Department of Agri-Agriculture, Community Compost and Food Base Reduction, Grant Program to Support City of Madison Community Food Base Reduction Initiative, requires fifteen vote. Agenda item number thirty-two, legislative file number six, seven, six, one, nine, amending the twenty-twenty-one Sustainability Improvement Capital Budget to add two hundred thousand dollars of grant funding, approving City of Madison application to U.S. EPA, State Environment Justic Co-operation Agreement, Grant Program to Support Public Education Training, Emergency Planning, Investigation on Impact of COVID-nineteen on underserved community and vulnerable population in City of Madison, requires fifteen votes. Agenda item is part of the consent agenda with additional recommendation as noted. Legislative fa, agenda item number thirty-seven, legislative file number six, six, two, one, five, urging landlords to forgive penalties and make face. Uh, recommended action is to adopt, uh, on consent agenda, it shows fourteen vote, but it doesn't need fourteen votes, it's just need eleven votes. Uh, agenda item number nine, uh, agenda item recommended made from the floor. Agenda item nineteen, legislative file number six, seven, five, seven, three, substitute. Amending section two point zero one four and three, three point zero one B of Madison General Ordinance to clarify prohibited meeting dates, uh, recommended action is to adopt from C C E C. Excuse me. Agenda item number twenty, legislative file number six, seven, six, three, seven. Amending sections two point zero five A one, two point zero five B one, two point zero five six and three, three point zero one eleven A, renumbering two point two four to two point zero five five and repealing two point zero five two, two point zero five three and two point two five of Madison General Orders, Ordinances to clarify the process for introduction and referrals. Recommended action is to adopt from C C E C. Twenty-two, uh, agenda item number twenty-one, legislative file number six, seven, six, three, eight. Amending section two point three zero two of Madison General Ordinances to change the time limit for speakers at public hearing. Recommended action is to adopt legislative file number six, seven, six, nine, zero, adopting A P M two dash five three COVID-nineteen vaccination testing policy to apply to orders. Recommended action is to re-refer to next common council executive meeting. Item requested for exclusion, agenda item number forty-six, legislative file number six, six, nine, four, nine. Amending section thirty-three point one three four of Madison General Ordinances to revise the jurisdiction of common council executive committee. Uh, item was referred from the last common council meeting and the recommended motion from C C C was to place on file. Item introduced from the floor for referral, legislative file number six, seven, nine, seven, five. Intro by title only, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into agreement with Dean County for the city use of non-congru- congregate hotel sheltering as a part of the city efforts to provide alternatives to unshelter homelessness. Recommended action is refer to City County Homeless Issue Committee as a lead and also to Finance Committee. Uh, legislative file number six, seven, nine, seven, seven, inter, intro by the title only, authorizing agreement to support low-cost student housing between the city and core campus manager. L L C, recommended action is refer to Finance Committee on ten twenty-five.
Thank you, Alder. So, uh, we also have registrants on item twenty-one. So, uh, we also have registrants on item twenty-one, so we'll separate that item. Are there other items that Alders wish to have separated from the consent agenda, Alder Furman?
Thank you, Mayor, item number nineteen, please.
We will separate item number nineteen, Alder Harrington McKinney.
Uh, item number forty-six.
Item forty-six is excluded.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. Are there any additional items that are requested for exclusion? Uh, Alder Wahili.
I would like to, item fifty-three, for the order, for redistricting to be referred to the, uh, uh, EOC.
Uh, so you're, you're requesting to add an additional referral to item fifty-three?
Yes, is that the redistricting one?
That's correct, Alder. Um, have you checked with staff on the timing on that, Alder?
No, unfortunately, I haven't.
So, uh, there's, there's, I don't think that's possible, um, given the incredibly tight timeframe we have. We have to adopt this ordinance, uh, and the clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, but.
I did, I did, I did talk to the staff before they bring to the, uh, council to have a conversation with the, uh, with the DCR or, you know, EOC department.
Uh, I, and I, I can't speak to whether or not that has happened, Alder, but I'm, I'm just concerned about adding the referral. I'm going to turn to the clerk to speak to the timeframe.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I have not, no, I'm not the one from my office who's been working on that, that's been, um, someone else. But I do know that the timeframe is so tight, I don't know unless, I, that, that would definitely have to be something that the ad hoc redistricting committee staff would have to, um, make happen. Cause I went between, uh, Nikki and those other folks that are in planning, um, I'm, I'm not sure that that's gonna, I don't know that that can, that can happen at this point.
So, I'm gonna ask Heather Stouter to weigh in, you may know the timeframe.
I'm sorry, I, I haven't been able to pull up the schedule of the EOC, but I'm thinking the only way this might be able to be accomplished is if they could commit to holding a special meeting in order to accomplish it. That's one strategy that could work. Again, I don't have their schedule in front of me, I'm scrambling to try to pull it up. Um, but, uh, that could be one action that the council might take, but they'd have to instruct them to hold a special meeting and get this back in time.
So, uh, Alder, given all of that information, do you still wish to make the referral? Or is it sufficient to confirm, and Heather could, could confirm this, that this will happen, that the redistricting staff would speak with the DCR staff?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you, Alder. So Heather, if you could please make sure that the redistricting staff reach out to DCR and particularly the Division of Equity and Social Justice to address the Alders' concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alder. Um, are there any additional items for exclusion? Or additional, Alder Harrington McKinney?
Um, not exclusion, I'd like to be added as a sponsor for, um, agenda item number eighteen, six, seven, four, zero, six, and agenda item number sixty-five, six, seven, five, seven, three.
All right, the clerk will add you as a sponsor on both of those items.
Thank you.
Alder Curry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to be recused from agenda item thirty-four, file number six, seven, six, two, one.
Thank you, Alder Curry, we'll note you as being recused from that item. Are there other, uh, separations, sponsorships, disclosures, or recusals? Alder Figaro Cole?
I also need to give recused from, um, thirty-four, please.
Clerk will note you as being recused, thank you. Uh, President Abbas?
Can you please also recuse me from agenda item number thirty-two?
Uh, recuse Abbas from thirty-two? Thank you, both, any additional disclosures, recusals, sponsorships, separations? Not seeing any, then, uh, let me just go over this, uh, one more time to make sure that we've got it. Um, items five and six are public hearing, uh, extra majority items twenty-five, thirty-one, and thirty-two. Additional recommendations on thirty-seven, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-two. Uh, excluded, uh, sorry, additional, uh, items, additional recommendations are on twenty, which is to adopt, and twenty-two, which is refer back to CCEC. Items nineteen, twenty-one, and forty-six are excluded from the consent agenda. And then we have two introductions from the floor. We'll also note for you that we have, um, registrants in support on items thirty, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-seven, and, uh, forty-six will be coming before us. Um, all those are in support, a few of them are available for questions. I believe you have a registration report, um, so if you wanted to refer to that for the details. Anything else on the consent agenda? Right, seeing none, we'll take that as moved by President Abbas.
Second.
Seconded by Vice President Martin, thank you. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote. And, uh, we will go on to our first public hearing, um, which is item five, legisstar six, seven, one, zero, eight, uh, partial discontinu- so I open a public hearing on a partial discontinuing and vacating of public street right-of-way of Appleton Road between South Street and Fish Hatchery Road. And, uh, so that public hearing is open, I see no registrants on item five. I will close that public hearing, President Abbas?
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded to adopt item five. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, item five is adopted. That brings us to item six, which is legisstar six, seven, four, nine, six, the twenty-twenty-two executive operating budget. Uh, we'll open that public hearing, we have a number of registrants, starting with Allison Bellburne of District Twelve, to be followed by Nicholas Lumos.
It's like Allison is not with us.
Okay, so then Nicholas Lumos of District Thirteen, representing focused interruption, to be followed by Nada Morgani.
Mayor Alders, first of all, we wanted to say thank you for your service. We've had the honor of speaking with almost all of you over the past few months, and we appreciate your time and energy spent thinking about how to reimagine public safety in the Madison area and forging a safer, fairer city for us all. We're here advocating on behalf of the amendment to fund the gun violence reduction strategy, or GVRS, being submitted tomorrow. The GVRS is a comprehensive, evidence-based, public health approach to violence reduction that has been implemented in cities across the country since nineteen ninety-six, typically reducing shootings by thirty to sixty percent. Gun violence in the Madison area is a dire threat to public safety and social justice. Please support this critical, life-saving work, thank you.
Thank you, our next registrant is Nada Morgani of Sun Prairie, to be followed by Joshua Farren.
So it looks like we had to promote her to panelist, and she should be joining us shortly.
Yep, Nada, go ahead.
I don't use she/her pronouns, I use they/them pronouns. Um, my name is Nada, and I'm speaking in opposition of the executive budget because the police do not need another two million dollars. The police do not keep us safe, and more often than not, the police act as a terrorist organization, targeting, kidnapping, and incarcerating our most marginalized community members. And we can do better than investing in police. The police budget is already one of the most inflated budgets in the city, and it makes no sense to me why, following twenty-twenty, following the murder of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor, following the vicious brutalization of Jacob Blake, following the deaths of countless other beautiful black folk, following the largest protests for racial rights and freedom of police violence in human history, why there's even a potential of increasing the police budget when the most marginalized members of your community have continuously been calling on you to stop funding the police? Because the police are our abusers, and the police are our murderers. It is an act of violent and vicious anti-blackness to further fund black incarceration, murder, and brutalization because supporting the police is supporting black incarceration, murder, and brutalization for the sake of white comfort, for the sake of appeasing to white fragility. That is the only reason the police exists. It is even more insulting to hear y'all consider increasing the budget of the police following the violent brutalization and arrest of nineteen-year-old Kaitwan Richardson, who was called a wanted criminal by the police because he was just seen outside at night past his curfew. The police officer who profiled him ended up chasing him down, wrestling him to the ground and arresting him. During the arrest, one of the officers attempted to shoot Kaitwan and shot another officer instead. But the Department of Justice and the media released statements accusing Kaitwan of attempting to murder a police officer. Kaitwan was already dealing with suicidal thoughts and extreme depression brought on by the history of abuse he's experienced at the hands of the police and the court system, and finding out while he was sitting inside of a cave, inside of a jail cell, that he was being called a cop killer is traumatizing. Could you imagine being a nineteen-year-old boy, walking around outside, getting chased down by a cop who just claims to recognize you and being profiled, almost getting shot by another cop when you have not fired a gun or done anything other than try to run away? And then finding out while you are sitting inside of a jail cell that the media is accusing you of being an attempted cop killer? Kaitwan is still sitting inside a jail cell, but the police officer who shot him is still working. I think of how differently Kaitwan's story could have gone if we've, we've chosen to invest in the community instead of the police. What if, instead of officers chasing down and brutalizing black teenagers for breaking curfew, we stop criminalizing black kids for being outside? What if, when black teenagers are carrying guns because Madison is unsafe for black folk, we don't send officers to brutalize them and instead commit money to making Madison a safer place to live for black folk? What if, instead of talking about giving more money to the police, we were talking about how a black child living in Madison is thirteen times more likely than a white child to be born into poverty? What if, instead of talking about giving more money to the police, we were talking, putting that two million dollars into ending the redlining that keeps most black folk out of living in a majority of the neighborhoods here in Madison? What if, instead of politicians debating about whether or not to give the police more money, y'all were debating on how to change the fact that this is one of the worst cities in the country to be a black person in? I really just want to close by saying that if the city has two million dollars to spend, y'all should spend it combating the racism here in this city and in this county instead of funding and supporting police terrorism. I yield the rest of my time.
Our next registrant is Joshua Farren of Wanakee, to be followed by Ananda Deacon. Do we have Joshua?
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, cool. So I don't technically live in Madison, but I'm, I work there, I'm in Madison every single day. So the, the budget very much, you know, affects other people outside of the city. And I, I don't think it's a good budget, I'm, I'm in opposition of it. Um, specifically increase to police funding and other specific things increased. But I, I'd like other people to, or everyone here to, to think about like what the Madison police have done to, like, show that they need an increased budget? Because I, you know, see them quite fr- frequently, uh, prove that they do not need an increased budget. But they're, you know, four officers showing up for a, a minor traffic stop with, you know, no threat to the officers. Like, they do things constantly that, that prove they don't need more money. Could be taking it from other things, the, the, in the police budget, if you want to add new things. And I, there's lots of other things that, uh, the money could go to, but, yeah, this, it's basically that. I think it's, I think it's not a good budget, and I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, our next registrant is Ananda Deacon of District Two, to be followed by Ryan Hartkopf.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Ananda, and my pronouns are she/her. I'm speaking in opposition of the budget. It is absolutely disgusting that the city has the nerve to funnel millions more than last year towards the police, and yet in the same breath, y'all want to give these awards or hold space or whatever to honor the grassroots and nonprofit organizations, to pat them on the back for the work they've done in the midst of the uprisings. These uprisings were centered on defunding and abolishing the police, putting that money into the black and brown and queer and trans and femme and disabled youth that are being violently overpoliced and creating community control safety initiatives run by and serving our communities. This is a spit in the face and just another example of Madison being always willing to bend over backwards to perform and appease the white liberals who don't yet know they're racist while still fully funding and awarding the very thing they are sa- we are saying over and over and over and over again is killing us. There is no amount of data or academic language or videos of black people being murdered that seems to be enough to convince you all, telling you all that the cops are planning to bust up the tent city at Raindoll and further criminalize poverty, or telling y'all how the cops purposely misled everyone to believe that a black teenager shot a cop when it was another cop who shot them, which by the way, caused his bail to be fifty thousand dollars initially. Telling you all this has proven to do nothing. So I'll try this. I am begging you all to stop the cop-on-cop violence, such as what we saw last week when a cop heinously shot another cop and proceeded to blame it on Kaitwan Richardson. The most surefire way to stop this needless cop-on-cop violence is by disarming and defunding them immediately. I am sure they feel very, very bad about how they have enacted so much violence in this young person's life and smeared their good name. So I think it is only right that you all urge the judge to drop all charges against Kaitwan and release him immediately, which you can do at his bail hearing Thursday at eight AM, because it is our duty apparently to clear their consciousness and protect them, since they want to play victim all the time. But in all seriousness, the final budget must not have over eighty million dollars, which is almost one-fourth of the budget to my understanding, going to the police. It shouldn't have five dollars going to the police. But if there is still over eighty million dollars going to the police by the time the budget is finalized, you will not stop hearing from this community, this I promise, and with that, I yield my time.
Our next registrant is Ryan Hartkopf of District Twenty, to be followed by Emily Merritt.
Thank you. Um, a lot of people say that we have a crime problem here in Madison, and I want to reframe that and just say we have an inequality problem. Crime is only a symptom of much larger and more deadly problems, like the poverty, housing insecurity, discrimination, health challenges, and resulting issues in social and criminal violence. MPDs can't solve any of those problems. Their damage can fill the press, and at worst, they can do and have done damage to our community and especially to black and brown people. In July of this year, fifty-two percent of the population of Dane County Jail was black in a city where seven percent of the population is black. Well, that's unconscionable and unacceptable. We need to do better, and we're not going to do better by putting money into MPDs. We're going to do better by putting money and giving effective resources to the communities most affected by this trauma. It's abundantly clear, in the wake of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, that crime fluctuates in response to economic and social factors, not in response to police budgets. Why give more money to an organization that is not capable of affecting real lasting change? I don't have confidence to the city or the office. I don't have confidence the city or the office of the mayor has adequately waived the concerns of its citizens, especially its black and brown constituents with the demands of MPDs. It is my opinion that the city of Madison and the past events of atrocities committed by MPDs and in this current budget has demonstrated that they are more devoted to order than to justice, that they prefer a negative peace, which is the absence of tension, to a positive peace, which is the presence of justice. But they constantly say, I agree with you in the goal you seek, but I can't agree with your methods of direct action. And they paternalistically feel they can set the timetable for another person's freedom. MPD makes up almost twenty-five percent of the entire city of Madison operating budget. Over half of MPD officers, sixty percent, don't even live in our city. Instead of sending our tax dollars out of the suburbs, instead of buying more bullets so the police can shoot each other in the hip or kill people undergoing mental health crises, let's invest that money into the community. We've already heard from organizations such as Focus Interruption on the work that they're doing. And there are other organizations such as Urban Triage, Dr. Psych Madison, Domestic Abuse Intervention Services, Commonwealth Development, who are constantly hurting for funding and are doing crucial work on root cause solutions to violence prevention, breaking cycles of intergenerational trauma, building individuals' power and self-agency, and relieving housing insecurity. We've had over a hundred fifty years of ignoring and gaslighting black and brown people in Madison and it's time for that legacy to end. I also want to say that people who are holding our communities up are themselves struggling to pay for their housing and healthcare. For every person complaining about car theft, there are two people who can't even pay for their brakes with a new tire to get to work or pay for registration to DMV. I see a constant wave of volunteers and mutual aid groups. Please do the right thing and invest this money into the community. I yield my time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Emily Merritt of District Seventeen, to be followed by Catherine Johnson.
I don't see anyone with the name Emily in the list.
All right, then Catherine.
Where do I see a Catherine?
Oh, okay, so let's try then for Dan Fitch of District Two, to be followed by Noah Reincober.
I do not see the name Dan Fitch, but I do see Noah.
All right, so then Noah Reincober of District Two, to be followed by Steve Berberg.
Uh, hi, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I, um, I just wanted to comment on the budget that is being proposed. It's not surprising to me that the city would be putting forward such a high amount of funding towards the police department and especially in comparison to other kinds of public services that our city offering. Um, I don't have any kind of numbers or tabs. And I think just as someone who was, who was present last year for a lot of the, a lot of the...
Noah, you're breaking up on us a little bit.
Yes?
We missed probably the last twenty, thirty seconds there. Um, I don't know if there's any way you can improve your connection.
Can you hear me all right right now?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess, um, I was just saying, I, I think that it is very tone deaf to have this level of spending on the police, especially when there were so many calls last year for defunding the police. Um, I understand that the city is probably not going to slash the police budget entirely um, within a year. But I think myself and many others would have liked to have seen at least a decrease in police spending and a significant increase in other services that could be provided to people who are going through uh, mental health crises, um, who are struggling with addiction, who are struggling with homelessness. Um, I think I, myself and many other people would love to see much more money put into services um, like that, um, which we don't need police responding to. Yeah, and I guess I'm just kind of disappointed to see such a, such a high, high amount of spending going towards the police this year, um, potentially, um, and an increase from last year. And we, I mean, as people have already pointed out, um, the only, uh, like, it's been pointed out in the media the last week or so that like the shooting that took place the other day, it was like the first time an officer has been shot in Madison in twenty years. And I find it very ironic that it came at the hands of another police officer, which again just reinforces what everybody has been saying that is the police who are the ones committing the most violence in this city. That's really all I have to say about this particular item. Um, I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Steve Berberg of District Sixteen, to be followed by Mia Masak.
I just want to remind all the registrants that in order for me to identify you as your registrant, your name needs to match your registration. Um, and we do have Steve.
Thanks.
Steve, go ahead.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Common Council members. Since at least the mid nineteen nineties, uh, growth in the number of Madison police officers has exceeded the growth in the number of Madison residents, you know, by rate. Uh, meanwhile, the crime rate has gradually been declining over time. So we're spending more and more on police at the expense of everything else. And yet, uh, I wanted to focus on this, uh, this aspect. And yet a vocal portion of your constituents believes crime is getting worse and that there aren't enough officers to handle it. Now, how can that be? For the answer, I suggest you look at the Madison Police Department's network of neighborhood resource officers or as I call it, the full employment program for police officers. The department uses these officers paid by taxpayers to fan public fear about crime and support for fatter police budgets. And it's not subtle. I've heard, uh, I've heard neighborhood officer and his civilian associate urge citizens to lobby the mayor and the common council members. But even tonight at six-thirty, while this common council meeting was starting, another meeting was starting at Our Savior Lutheran Church in my neighborhood. It was a meeting of the Good Neighbor Project, featuring a Madison Police Neighborhood Resource Officer and promoted as a way to learn about how to lobby the mayor and city council. Just in the last few weeks, I have recently, I have attended a coffee with a cop neighborhood meeting and a community conversation on crime meeting, all in my neighborhood, all organized or facilitated by neighborhood officers and a civilian associate of theirs who's a former candidate for common council. At these meetings, there's an air of grievance from the police. At one, the Neighborhood Resource Officer Howard Payne claimed, I believe falsely, that the Madison Police Department had not been consulted about the operation of the Dairy Drive Sheltered Encampment. But he told his audience, the police will have to clean up the problems created by the mayor's shelter policy. At another meeting, this neighborhood officer suggested that Madison residents should decide for themselves whether they believe there are stark racial disparities in the Madison Police Department's record of arrests and citations. Uh, these disparities are widely known and have been well documented for more than a decade. There's simply no dispute about this. But perhaps the department feels that casting doubt about its embarrassing record may be a way to legitimize itself and its eighty-three million dollar a year in expenditures. So anyway, we're spending tax dollars to send police officers out to drum up support for even greater expenditures of tax dollars on, for police and to whitewash the department's terrible record of racial, racist disparities. So I'm looking forward to seeing, um, some thoughtful and substantial budget amendments from this council. I think that there's a lot to do and a lot of, um, really good city functions that could be funded that could make us all, uh, safer and more secure outside of the police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Mia Masak of District Six, to be followed by Erica Bach.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Thank you. Fair warning, I'm not necessarily coming at you as individuals, but I'm coming at the system. By all means, if I've got it twisted, I look forward to being proven wrong. But I feel that we have been and continue to be failed. I'd like to raise a resolution that you do not ever interrupt someone who is paying tribute to our ancestors and voicing the overdue need for justice, even if they do go a little over their permitted amount of words. Those actions are violent and demonstrate a lack in decency, integrity, and respect for those who are here as well as for those who are not. And their lives deserve the utmost honor. And in my opinion, a humble opinion, should be the conversation, period. I'm grateful to hear about these funds mentioned earlier that are being devoted to local BLM-related organizations. But can you begin to see how investment there, yet even more investment into agencies they work to dismantle and defund is contradictory? Sometimes it can feel like we'd be better off speaking to a brick wall about these issues and then at least I could slam my head against it after being ignored. I cannot put into words my dismay and disappointment in this city for countless reasons, which obviously we don't have time to discuss tonight. I'll be lucky if, um, the short few moments I am allotted don't get cut off prematurely as it is. I love freedom of speech and being oppressed by those who claim to be public servants and work for us. I didn't realize that this was a comedy special because that concept seems to be a joke, except we're not laughing. Did you know that yesterday was Tony Terrell Robinson Jr.'s birthday before a registrant mentioned it? Or did most of you experience the privilege of being preoccupied with the blessing of still having air in your lungs? I know someone who recently got their car reported in a wealthy neighborhood. Despite them having just been minding their business at the public beach or as we see it, stolen indigenous land, the impression would be our kind, you know, window tinted and tattooed, are not welcome. They were approached by police, the last thing they were in the mood for because of a trauma that had occurred days prior. And they almost went to jail simply for just existing and inquiring as to why they were being disturbed in the first place. The potential escalation of the situation made Tony flash in my mind, not that he's ever far from it, because all that young man needed was some reassurance and understanding to be worked with and not against. So are we supposed to be grateful the cop didn't take the person into custody this time? Or thankful they chose to remove their hand off the gun that they were ready to draw? Because we're not. It makes us even more angry that we are here and Tony is gone, leading me to more recent events. Mr. Richardson, being unjustly harmed by Madison police officers downtown, one of whom shot the other one. Despite the fact it was allowed through media to assume it was Mr. Richardson who fired the shot, which is egregious and corrupt enough, but based on history, who are we to assume that bullet was intended for? We're gonna deem it acceptable to put human life second to a dollar amount? Tackled to the ground to defend bail jumping as he was on his way home from work? Tell me how he'll ever be able to pay the fees while locked in a cage? Don't worry, I'll wait. Would any of this extra projected, you know, two mil be invested into target practice? So they don't shoot each other and they stop killing us? The public is beginning to see through the veil of Madison and global leadership. The fact more money for law enforcement is even possible, let alone the topic of discussion? When there are so many other issues screaming for our energy, funding, resources, time? It's demoralizing, it's disgusting, infuriating, and quite honestly leaves me feeling ashamed and embarrassed to be part of a body who knowingly evades what is right. We are failing ourselves and each other. Thank you.
Our next registrant is Erica Bach of District Seven, to be followed by Matt Rowe.
Erica, I see you're on a phone. There you go.
Hello, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Um, I have refrained from calling in for a number of the budget meetings, primarily because you've heard from us, um, folks who are generally opposed either to the Madison Police Department or to spending that does not involve uplifting the community. And I chose tonight to call in primarily because of the events of the past week and the fact that Kaitwan continues to sit, Kaitwan Richardson, the young man who was involved in last week's incident, continues to sit in the jail cell. Um, it's, it's not up to me as a white woman to tell many of you about the experience of poverty. Uh, while I am currently impoverished, that has not been my lived experience. And so I'm going to ask you, for those of you who have had that lived experience, to, um, take the time and, and, um, those of you who have, who have not lived a life in poverty or have not experienced that, to, um, honor the emotional labor of those who have. And I would just want to point out that part of surviving poverty often intersects with our criminal justice systems. Um, it is not acceptable in a city of so much wealth and so many resources and millions of dollars in a budget each year, where we have young people who feel the need to beg, borrow, borrow and steal um, for things like money, power, and respect. If we were investing in things like neighborhood youth centers, places to socialize, opportunities to make a living wage, if we were investing in literacy programs and housing and all of the things that we have the opportunity to invest in, we wouldn't have cases of young, generally eighteen to twenty-five-year-old black males who are being sought out by our police department. We wouldn't need eighty-four million dollars to pay this force if we believed in the force and the power of ourselves and the ability to make different choices. Heck, the mayor's even willing to give up part of her budget, over fifty thousand dollars of her own budget, to make improvements in this city. And yet, the police decide that they want more money essentially for the eight new officers in the town of Madison, which has been annexed. There are opportunities for Madison Police Department to prove itself and perhaps earn back the public trust. They don't need millions of dollars to do that. And yet, you look at page thirty-two, the only reduction that they're making to this budget year is one already vacant position and the Crime Stoppers Program. They're not making any sacrifices. And I also need to point out that while we're all very upset with Madison Police Department, I'm equally as disappointed with the mayor and common council members. I hope you are too, because on October tenth, the mayor published a statement that the suspect was in custody. And Mayor, with all due respect, I've checked your blog every day since then to see a recount, a walk back, an apology. You are part of the issue that causes people to distrust young black men and to continue the cycle of poverty in which they find themselves and to continue to support Madison Police Department. There has been no apology from any public official, from Dr. Chief Barnes, all the way to our mayor who is right in front of us tonight. It continues to perpetuate the racial and biased distortion of our young people in this community while we fail to fund their futures. So while I appreciate that people are able to make cuts to their budget, what you really need to do is look at the ways that we have to cut our reliance on Madison Police Department for our public safety. We have to invest in all of the many things that you just celebrated with Operation Fresh in all of the many things that you just celebrated with Operation Fresh Start, with Urban Triage, and with Freedom, Inc. It is extremely difficult to believe your sincerity, and I find it, frankly, disingenuous that you would honor these groups who, with no apologies, unequivocally say, defund the police. And to remind you all, there is no better time than right now, the heels of the international movement to say, "The police haven't earned our trust, nor have they earned our dollars." If every single one of us put our tax dollars into escrow, we could defund the police here, tonight. So I'm asking you all to look very closely, as another registrant suggested, line item by line item. Before we nickel and dime our young people, we really have to look at what we're spending our money on. And M. Adams from Freedom, Inc. would tell us, "Show me your budget, and I'll show you your values." Make sure, please, that the city of Madison budget reflects our values. Madison Police Department clearly does not. And finally, while I'm on the topic, for a brief suspension of the rules, I'd like to speak to item number 21. Please don't limit the amount of time that you're willing to listen to the public.
I'm sorry, if you wish to speak to number 21, you can register for it. We haven't reached it yet, so there's still time to register on it.
Certainly. Not a problem. I have registered for that. I was hoping to save you all some of the time so that you could contemplate it for better financial decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Matt Rowe of District Two, to be followed by Catherine Johnson.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I wish I could say that I'm shocked that we're here talking about this again. If, you know, if I were, it'd mean that this isn't a regular occurrence, and at this point, I'm just unsurprisingly insulted and frankly exhausted with being angry all the time. I've seen this committee do the performative minimum time and again to stave off the ire of the city. That's not serving your people. You were elected to make this city better, so why are we here? We're talking about adding eight cops to the force when they can't even hold themselves accountable for the incident last week. It took them over a week to fess up to their own mess, and the kid that they were trying to arrest is still in a cell, and the city is led to believe that he tried to kill a cop. And mayor, you're at fault for a lot of that, as per the previous speaker's comment. If you remember back in August, it was decided the police would no longer respond to mental health crises. So why are we talking about adding more cops? There's less work for them, so what do we need eight more to do? They already overpolice our black and brown communities, and the proof is in the data. One in nine black and brown youth will see time behind bars before they turn 18. And it's been said before, Madison is factually the worst place to live for people of color. The liberal bubble of this city pops real quick when you look at how racist its policies are, and most of y'all strike me as the kind of people that proudly say, "I'm not racist. I don't see color." If you don't see color, you don't see patterns, and that's fact. Stop entertaining these bullshit requests for more money and learn to recognize when people are under siege. These cops aren't servants of the people, they're agents of the state, modern-day slave catchers in a funded gang of terrorists and murderers. Invest in your community. If, when you invest in your communities, you lessen the crime, you eliminate poverty, you lessen the crime, you lessen the need for people to fight over resources, you lessen the crime. It's not hard to imagine, just stop being heartless. I truly hope you all vote this down, but I've learned not to hold my breath. Please give us a reason to believe you want better for the people, otherwise expect to be replaced. Also, granted, I heard you last time. Real quick, I'm not able to stick around for item 22, so I'll say it here. I only want you to lessen, you only want to lessen the speaking time so you all can get to bed sooner at the cost of actually giving people the proper amount of time to voice their opinion. That's bullshit.
Thanks. We're on item six. If you want to speak to item 21, you can speak when that, we bring that up. Thank you. Our next and final registrant on this item is Catherine Johnson from District Four.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Sorry about the technical issue with my screen name. So my name is Catherine Johnson. I'm a Madison resident, and I want to speak today about values, and I want to speak in positives. My emotions surrounding this move around a lot because I interact with the people who are most affected, and in a lot of ways, I am one of the people who's most affected by this. So I'm aware that defund the police scares people a lot. And that's, I think, because people do look to the police for protection. But what I'm looking to do is to see our police budget and our city budget reflect our values and reflect what we want to see. And what I'm looking for is redistribution, not just taking away the thing we think protects us, which doesn't, but funding what actually protects us. So I hope, I hope these values are what we all share. I want to see our city healthy. I want to see our environment healthy. I want to see our lakes healthy. I want to see our climate healthy. I want to see our roads, our infrastructure, our bus system serving our entire city. I want to see everything in good condition. And I want to see my community, I want to see my people in good, healthy places. I want to see those things funded. And I hope that those are the values that you and all of us share. I hope that you want to see people living in homes, living with heat and air conditioning in safe environments, having enough to eat, having enough health, having enough resources to address their health problems, seeing people live in healthy, mentally healthy and physically healthy situations. I hope you want to see our communities healed, not poisoned. I hope you want to see people in good, positive places, not starving, not hurting, not out in the weather, not being overpoliced. And I will say that I do not think the police reflect those values. What we need to see is people healed and protected, and I don't see how we can look at people carrying guns, at people carrying other weapons of destruction and harm, and think that that is what will make our communities healthy and healed. And we know that these crimes that we're somehow relying on the police to protect us from aren't just people who just have a good time stealing, have a good time robbing, have a good time hurting people. The vast majority of those crimes come from people who have not been served by our city, people who have been abandoned and underserved, and that the way that we reduce those harms are by helping people or by healing people and by funding those things. So if you value those things, the things I've described, if you want to see that vision for our city, I'd like to see us commit to that monetarily. I'd like to see that reflected in our budget. And I would like to see Madison move forward and be what I know that it can be. And I want to see that happen quickly. This is something that I see every time in the red tape and how long these decisions take to make. We can afford that. I am not doing great myself, but I live in an apartment. I have heat, I have air conditioning, I have enough food at the moment. I can afford to wait. I can afford to sit in my house and go, "Isn't it nice to listen to the rain outside when you're nice and cozy inside with a cup of tea?" That's not what people are living. People can't afford to wait. And people die. People die from addiction issues that are untreated. People die because their health issues are exacerbated by living outside. People are actually dying from this. People are suffering from this every day. When we say, "Well, we need more time," I hope that you will think of those people. I hope that you will go out and talk to those people as well. But in lieu of that, I hope that you will listen to us, the people who, sometimes the people who are actually directly affected are able to speak, but often no. And I hope that you can at least listen to the people here who see that as their community, who are friends with people who are suffering, who care about them and come here to advocate. I hope you can think of whenever it rains or thunders or gets cold, we're getting into winter. I hope you can think of the people who are suffering and can't afford to wait for us to address this. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Are there questions for any of our registrants?
Madam Mayor, I do believe we skipped one registrant that is now here.
Thank you, Tonya. That individual spoke in early public comment.
Okay.
Are there any questions for any of our registrants? All right, seeing none, I'm going to recess the public hearing. President Abbas motioned to refer to the Finance Committee.
Move motion to refer to Finance Committee.
Second.
Moved and seconded to refer to the Finance Committee. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that item is referred. And then we will go on to our separated items, starting with item 19, which is Legisstar 67573. President Abbas, let's get a motion on item 19.
Yep, move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. And I don't think we have any registrants, so Alder Furman?
Thank you, mayor. Based on the discussion today at CCEC, I worked with staff to further just clarify some of the timing of the holidays that are noted in this and wanted to move an amendment so it's clear to everybody that timing. I have mailed that amendment to the clerk, all Alders, and you as well, and I'm happy to read that.
Go ahead, Alder.
So specifically changing the language, right before Rosh Hashanah, saying, "From sunset at the beginning of Rosh Hashanah to nightfall at the end of Rosh Hashanah, from sunset at the beginning of Yom Kippur and to the day of Yom Kippur, from sunset at the beginning of Passover to sundown at the end of the second day, from sunset the evening before and the day of Eid al-Fitr, from sunset the evening before and the day of Eid al-Hadé, and other holidays designated by the Common Council. And I apologize, I am not very good at pronouncing. I tried my best. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. So that's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
So it moved and seconded to amend item 19 as detailed by Alder Furman, and you should all have that in your email. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Seeing no discussion on the amendment, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of the amendment? Seeing no objection, there's a unanimous vote in favor of the amendment, which then to the motion as, to the ordinance amendment as amended by Alder Furman's amendment, is there any discussion, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the amended substitute on item 19. And we will move on to item 21, which is Legisstar 67638, amending sections of the ordinances to change the time limit for speakers at a public hearing. We do have registrants on this item, starting with Larissa Joanna from District Two, to be followed by Emily Merritt. Do we have Larissa?
Hi, this is item 21 we're talking about.
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, no, just like others who might not be able to stick around for this item, I also appreciate that it is our constitutional right to voice our demands or voice, and we should have as much time as is allowed. Five minutes is already not enough to say many, many things that we can prove when it comes to certain items that will either affect or benefit our communities. Many people work really hard on research and send emails instead so that this information can be provided. But it's very important that our public commentary, when you guys are holding these meetings, get heard by you guys who are, at the end of the day, making these decisions. And so you can hear the emotion as reading them. It's not the same. Five minutes is already not enough time, so I strongly oppose that the time is reduced. As we often get shut down, we are already not able to comment on things for whatever reason. I was skipped to speak on item six, for example, where I strongly oppose, what I really wanted to say is that I strongly oppose any funding for the police. There is many situations that the police have put me and my children this last year.
If you can speak to item 21, please.
I strongly oppose to any reduction of time. So I yield my time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Emily Merritt of District Seventeen.
I do not see anyone with that name in the list.
Right, then our next registrant is Noah Reinkober of District Two, to be followed by Erica Bach.
Yeah, I will just weigh in with a very similar sentiment. I think it's, I think it's very important for the constituents to be able to speak, probably more than five minutes in some cases, but definitely not less. I think this is part of the democratic process at a local level, and this is one of the best ways for people to get involved with these council meetings. I would definitely not be in favor of reducing the amount of time that people have to speak. It's very important that people have the time to get all of their thoughts out, since we really do have a lot of people who are directly impacted by a lot of the decisions that are made by this board. And we also have a lot of people who do a lot of research and have a lot to present to this council as well. I will yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Erica Bach of District Seven, to be followed by Matt Rowe.
Hello, good morning, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I really could have saved you this time, but instead we're beholden to Robert's Rules of Order. I don't know how many of you are following rules from the 1800s, but apparently those are more important than even the citizens trying to spare you a few extra minutes. So unfortunately, now my mood has changed, and I'm quite a bit upset because, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. explained to us many, many years ago in 1966, "A riot is the language of the unheard." And we saw what those riots and revolutionary moments mean when they are outside of your homes, and they are in the streets, and they are unquelled voices. And so to go and oppose that would not only be an insult to the public, but it would potentially also be something that you'd want to check in with core council about in terms of the Wisconsin Open Meetings Law. And that does acknowledge that the public is entitled to the fullest and most complete information regarding government affairs. We acknowledge that you all have the right as a body to make those decisions, and yet, these opportunities to speak in public comment are actually going to save you the time and energy that you would need to hear from all of your constituents, that you would need to be able to maneuver around your neighborhoods without the public showing up to tell you what they think. So to make anything less than five minutes is not only, again, an insult to us, but it's beholden to a very late 18th century ideal. And I hope that you'll consider that this really is an opportunity to listen to not only the people who are speaking to you, but also all of those voices that are unheard. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Matt Rowe of District Two.
Matt Rowe is not in the list.
Right. Did we have Emily Merritt come in by any chance?
No.
Right, then are there any questions for any of our registrants? All right, seeing none, then President Abbas, a motion on item 21?
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt item 21. Are there- Moved and seconded to adopt item twenty-one. Are there questions or is there discussion? Seeing none, is Vice President Martin?
Hi, I apologize. I just wanted to know, I don't know if this would be Attorney Haas or somebody else on staff who could tell us if there are any comparable time limits on citizen input during specific meetings, like council meetings, again, for other municipalities other than the city of Madison.
Attorney Haas, do you have any sense of that?
I'm sorry, was the question whether there's a requirement for certain?
No, I was wondering if there was any kind of like, you know, studies or checking in with other municipalities that are similar to the city of Madison, that, or like checking in on what their requirements were or what their limits were in terms of speaking at public or council meetings, et cetera.
I have not looked at that. I'm not aware that the council office did.
Okay.
Or not.
Okay, thank you.
Vice President Martin, I can tell you extremely anecdotally, just from my conversations with other cities, that, and it's extremely anecdotal. I've talked with a handful of other mayors, all of whom had shorter time limits than our current situation of three minutes for most items and five minutes for public hearings. Many, some of them had a minute, two minutes. Others would vary the amount of time allowed per person based on how many people were registered. But again, it's extremely anecdotal. I haven't done any, you know, sort of comprehensive survey of other cities.
I just want to add that I have like the same kind of anecdotal experience. Again, realizing that this is also anecdotal, but my experience has been similar to the mayor's. So that's all I wanted to check in on and to see if there was like a solid, you know, like time limit that cities comparable to Madison have had for individual public comment on individual items. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Martin. Any further questions or discussion on item twenty-one? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded. Is there objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item twenty-one? Seeing no objection, we'll record, oh, Alder Bennett?
Can you just mark me as opposed?
We'll record Alder Bennett as voting no. Is there any objection then to recording a unanimous vote except for Alder Bennett? Seeing no objection, that vote will be recorded on item twenty-one. And we'll go on to item forty-six, which is Legis star six, six, nine, four, nine, amending sections of the M G O to revise the jurisdiction of the Common Council Executive Committee. On item forty-six, we have one registrant in support, Justice Castaneda of District Fifteen, not wishing to speak but available to answer questions. Are there any questions for Justice Castaneda? Right, seeing none. Then President Abbas, a motion, please, on item forty-six.
Move motion to place on file.
Second.
Moved and seconded to place on file. Is there discussion? Alder Furman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move a substitute motion to adopt. And if I get a second, I'll discuss.
I will second.
Second. All right, so it's moved and seconded a substitute to adopt. Alder Furman?
Thank you, Mayor. I sent an email to all Alders with background information on this item, and that note is also attached to the legislation item online. I'm going to just try to briefly summarize that note that I sent out. Our committee system and referral system is broken. We have far too many committees, and we refer legislation to too many places. The biggest effect this has on our legislative process is that it adds more difficulty for residents. If residents advocate for or against an item, having referrals to multiple committees increases their efforts by adding more meetings for them to have to attend. This is often a barrier for people without privilege. On legislation, we passed legislation this evening related to referrals, which I support, but also recognize that there are multiple solutions that are needed to address this problem. I look forward to the Task Force on Government Structure, Implementation Work Group's upcoming work and their efforts in coming up with actionable proposals focused on restructuring our committee system. The definition and name of C C E C has been changed multiple times over the years. I have great admiration for the committee, and I've attended just about every meeting since I was appointed Alder in August twenty eighteen. Based on my participation in T F O G S and now the Implementation Work Group, I believe that it is important, there is an important role for C C E C to deal with the multiple issues related to our government structure and function. Based on the current ordinance, the C C E C, like every other one of our committees, is a recommendation body. They are not a decision-making body. Like every other committee we have, it has a definition of its duties. The intent with this change is to make it easier for residents by removing effort duplication and repetition when participating in legislative discussions. All members of C C E C still have full discussion and decision-making powers with their roles as Alders on the Common Council. The major change in the ordinance essentially says that the committee would receive referrals of ordinances, resolutions, and reports from the Common Council that are not referred to other committees, hold public hearings thereon, and make reports and recommendations on matters so referred. It does have a carve-out for there to be referrals of items that deal with the structure and function of the Common Council and of other committees, even if those are referred to other committees. Too many referrals going to C C E C isn't something unique to this current term. I did, in the legislation that's posted on the legislative item, I've got some detail on what some of that looks like. But what would be left for C C E C to do if this proposal takes place a ton? You could look at tonight's ordinance. Everything on tonight's ordinance at C C E C, and there was a lot of stuff there, was absolutely within the definition of this change. You could read the full ordinance for review online, but some of the highlights, you know, include the referrals that I talked about. It includes discussing topics that may form the basis of future legislation to be introduced to the council, determined by motion of the committee to discuss topics of broad concern to the city that may not be considered in any other committee across the authority of several committees. In addition, they're tasked with reviewing of state legislation, serving as the Administrative Review Board, and the Common Council may also assign other duties to the Common Council Executive Committee. And again, you could see the full details, you know, by looking at the C C E C ordinance. I'm hopeful that if the committee had more time, more legislation could be generated from the discussion of briefings that take place there, and there also could be more regular discussion about stuff like meeting formats, access to meetings, including people with disabilities, how constituent services takes place, that stuff, anything from the three-on-one that we've been talking about for a while, or the Orange Proposal that came out of T F O G S, and many other important issues that are just not addressed elsewhere. I believe, based on the reaction to this change previously when this was brought up, I don't think it makes sense to wait and bundle it with other changes, and I certainly look forward to a constructive discussion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Furman, and apologies. You all jump around on my screen. It makes it hard to unmute myself. Our next speaker is Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I want to speak to this amendment. And I'm going to start like this. The executive committee, and I'm looking at shared power, not shared power, but shared leadership. I want to address checks and balances. There is a mayor, and then there's a twenty elected officials, and then there's the executive committee. The mayor has deputy mayors to facilitate well-functionality of the mayor's office. The council has the executive committee to do that work. The mission of the executive commission, executive committee, responsible for recommending rules and procedures to be followed by all standing committees of the Common Council and all council meetings, establishes rules and guidelines for use of the council office facilities. Such rules and procedures shall be approved, shall be approved, shall be approved by the Common Council, no citizen members. The Common Council Executive, the Common Council Organizational Committee shall be renamed the Common Council Executive Committee, effective for eighteen twenty-seven. I took the time to read that because the executive committee functions as to make the work of the council more efficient. And in reducing that work, what I believe this amendment does, it reduces the efficiency of the Common Council. Every decision by the executive committee comes before the council for a final decision. If we have the mayor with that staff to have better efficiency of the mayor's office, I am not clear why we would not want that same element of efficiency for the Common Council, not making those decisions, but being able to facilitate the functionality and the efficiency of the council work. So I will not be, I will not be supporting this, and I would ask the Alders to really consider that shared leadership and where we sit in relationship with the mayor's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Evers.
Yes, Madam Mayor, and I ask my colleagues' indulgence. I really did want to hear from Justice Castaneda to his involvement and intimate familiarity with T F O G S. It's interesting to me that he's in favor of Alder Furman's proposal here. And if it would please the body, I would like to give Justice an opportunity to explain to us why he's in support.
Thank you, Alder. Is there objection to returning to questions for registrants? I'm not seeing any additional hands, so if Justice is still here with us.
Justice, you should have a prompt on you. There you go.
Go ahead, Alder.
Yeah, Justice, just real quick, you're registered as being in favor of Alder Furman's amendment here. Could you please share with us why?
Yeah, honestly, I think you did a really good job of explaining it, and I also, just thinking about this in terms of foreshadowing a lot of the heavy lift from T F O G S, I think this is going to situate the council a lot better to address a lot of those things. But I mean, I really do encourage folks to take the memo, the letter that he wrote. And to think about the matter of the letter as it stands, I, you know, there's so much with all this stuff that I, ultimately, I don't think, I mean, I don't think it does the erosion of the power of the council that was suggested. I think it actually, and a lot of the things, I mean, for one, what I was, you know, I think what a lot of us were doing on T F O G S is trying to make the council stronger, and I think that got lost in a way. But I really do, you know, I've worked with many folks on the council. I don't agree with, you know, we all don't agree a lot on many different things, but I do think that having a strong council is the intent, and actually, this does a lot to do that, and so that's why I was, I'm in support of this.
Thank you, Justice.
Thank you, Alder. I'm just in courtesy to your colleagues now, I'm going to see if there are other questions for Justice. Vice President Martin? No. Alder Figaro? No. Alder Foster?
Mayor, I actually had a question for staff, and I apologize if I missed that. I think you might have just gone right into discussion.
That's all right, Foster. We'll come back to you. Alder Harrington McKinney, is it a question for Justice Castaneda?
Yes, it is, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Alder.
Justice, you spoke of the intent of the T F O G S committee and how there is a drift. Would you say more, and you didn't say drift, that was my word, not yours, would you say more about the intent of the T F O G S recommendations in that subcommittee?
Sure. I can't, I kind of left this to the council. I have not been, except for the minutes, I haven't been, you know, attending the subcommittee meetings for the T F O G S implementation, but there's just a lot. I'm not, you know, I talk a bit. I don't know that I'm the best communicator at times. And I'm not a politician, so I don't think tactically a lot, and so I don't think that the way we came to a lot of the conclusions, there was a lot of thought that was put into it, but I don't think we were really thinking politically or tactically. Like, the whole point was never to like have a full-time counsel, and I think, for instance, it was to pay people for their work, you know, and to pay people for their labor, and I recognize, and I've seen you all working, and I see what it takes to do this, you know, to do your work, and I firmly believe that people should be able to be paid for that, and I think that will expand the applicant pool or the candidate pool significantly. So there's stuff like that. I mean, it's a different, it's not, I don't know that it's exactly germane to this specific thing about T F O G S. I mean, we can talk about that some other day, but I think with this, though, what I see Alder Furman trying to do with this and the sponsors is trying to actually make this much more efficient for the council, and I think that that will go a long way in making you guys a lot stronger. So I don't know if that directly answers your question, but there's a number of things. I mean, the way that we came up with the number for Alders to get paid or the prorated number, that was very esoteric. It was based on what the city subsidizes housing at, and I think, you know, again, that's not a politically tactical strategy to do stuff like that because it went out. And, you know, I still am thinking about the committee of the whole. We predicted what was going to happen in that, you know, by making an advisory referendum unto itself, I think, was, again, you know, if you didn't want it to change, that was very tactical, but I don't think that that was, you know, at that committee meeting, we were told that this thing, you know, that this thing still would go back to the people, and I still think it needs to go to the people as a binding referendum, but I don't know. Like I said, I could keep going about a lot of the tactical errors that we made as a group in terms of the presentation. We opened up you all, the council, to a criticism or a critique that you guys were trying to like triple your salary, and that was never the case. The council was not doing that. We were trying to make the council stronger because of everything you brought up, right? And to have a strong council, I think, is really good for the city, so I don't know if that directly answers your question. Sorry if I ran on.
Thank you. I don't see.
It kind of went, let me, it kind of went in a direction that, and I assume my question was asked, but I was really kind of looking at the efficiency of the executive committee, and maybe your answer was couched in there, and I just didn't hear it. Thank you very much for giving input.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. Are there any additional questions for our registrant? If not, thank you, Justice. And then apologies, Alder Foster. I did skip over questions for staff, so I'll go to you for questions for staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Attorney Haas, just one, I think, quick one. If this ordinance is adopted and this council or a future council wanted for some reason to still refer something to C C E C that was also referred to another body, to another body and and didn't fit the exemption, uh, would it be true that the the council could suspend this rule uh via two-thirds vote and then still proceed with the referral?
Um, uh, yeah, I I think it could, yes.
Okay, and I guess just similarly with the other um chain, proposed change, uh kind of striking that the part about the work plan, there's nothing that would still prevent the C. 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 from developing a plan and and kind of working on it is just would no longer be part of their formal charge.
Right, and and certainly the council could, you know, direct C. 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 to do that or refer a work plan to C. C. to work on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Um, so now we're back to discussion. Uh, Vice President Martin, I saw that you left the queue.
Yeah, I I jumped the gun for discussion, so it it's okay to.
No, that's all right. I I was keeping separate queues, so we're back to discussion and and you're first.
Okay, thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Um, I have been looking at this proposal and I've been looking at um comments made about this proposal. Um, while I look at this, what I see is not a contraction of uh uh powers of a council president or executive council. Um, what I see from this is more of an expansion. Um, I really do think that a a pro- uh this proposal will uh broaden the purview of C. C. E. C. Because instead of us having to look at um pieces of legislation that have been reviewed by multiple other committees or another, even just one committee, um, we have the C. C. E. C. does not need to look at that. I I used to work in uh the Wisconsin State Legislature and the Rules Committee was kind of a comparable body to C. C. E. C. Um, the difference being that the Rules Committee in the state legislature, both in the in the Assembly and the State Senate, um, they are the ones that get to decide what goes goes on an agenda. That's not the same here. Um, things will be on our agenda regardless of what a certain committee uh says. So I don't think that any member of this body has to worry about um a a member of the council losing our our voice or our impact. I also don't think that that it's appropriate to think that the C. C. E. C. would would lose their voice or somehow the that the president would lose their their ability to um advocate for his or her own agenda or for things that come through the committee or or don't or come through other committees. Um, I think that with uh legislation like this, this frees up the C. C. E. C. and the president and the vice president from worrying about like day-to-day issues that are being handled by other um uh boards, commissions and committees that that we are, that we work with. And provides an opportunity for us to look forward in in a way that that we can't, if we are constantly constantly like reviewing the um the legislation that that affects the here and now. Um, I think that if if we were to pass legislation like this, this would open up possibilities for not only the president and vice president, but also the C. C. E. C. to think more long-term about issues that are affecting the city um as a whole and and really gives um council leadership an opportunity to like really do a deep dive into um issues that that are I'm struggling with my words right now. Issues that are like more long-range, issues that we might not necessarily be totally affected by in the here and now, but have to think about. And I I just think that that this this resolution and this legislation provides an opportunity for council leadership and for C. C. E. C. to take a a bolder stance and be able to look at at um more long-range issues that are going to be facing us as a city as we go. And and I and I have a really hard time thinking that this is something that could possibly stifle the voice of a president, a vice president, or any member of C. C. E. C. I think that this really provides an opportunity for our council leadership to be able to um take a look at these larger issues and look at them in a more like a a more broadly more broadly-based situation and that that we can attack these issues in in ways that perhaps are not necessarily straightforward. And we, because we have this kind of forward-looking, future-seeking um uh kind of uh approach to things at C. E. C. C. E. C., we really have the opportunity as a council, as uh council president, vice president, and any member of C. C. E. C. to really kind of work on these long-range issues that we are looking at as a city without worrying about um, you know, potential immediate issues. This is, this is something that we can hash out more on the long range. And I think that that that's an amazing thing and a really a really positive thing for our body to think about and to to, you know, uh, I I'm running out of words, my apologies. But, you know, I I think that this is a really good step forward in terms of um allowing the council to think forward and think in in the future and and not worry about necessarily the here and now. And we can really think about how our actions now will affect the city in the future. So uh, yeah, I I also think that this makes, uh ironically, that I'm I'm adding this now. I really think that this adds to um efficiency because we will be trusting our boards, commissions and uh committees to make solid recommendations that we can review as a council that the C. C. E. C. does not need to take an additional step to look at. So to me, this improves efficiency. This improves our forward-looking outlook and and provides us as a council and as a as a body and as a city the ability to be more creative and and really think about things that will affect us five or 10 years down the road and and thinking about how our decisions now will affect tho- those realities five or 10 years down the road. So thank you so much, and I will be done now.
Thank you, Vice President Martin. Um, Alder Figaro call.
Thank you, uh Mayor. Um, so to add to Vice President Martin and and to the reading of the role of the C. C. E. I mean, I had I had actually prepared something for the last meeting and I have done about it. So I'm not going to read the entire thing, but I so I'm just going to focus on a few points on how um to add to just what Arvina just said. This is an opportunity to not only focus on things that um on the long term, but also on things that we need today as a council, as a as a unit of 20. Like, there's there's um processes and procedures that the C. C. E. C. should be working to better our processes. It should be working for us and should be concerned with the things that makes us function better. So for example, we should, the C. C. E. C. should be um developing a process to keep us safe. I mean, when verbal and cyber attacks to one of our own um raised high levels of threat of security concerns, we were all left wondering what was what was the process to manage that? I mean, I I I was totally helpless trying to help somebody else figure out how to navigate those waters. We had to, we asked the mayor, we asked the chief, um, we asked the the president, and nobody really knew how to manage when someone is um um not only verbally attacking you, but the attacks were so extreme that you were fear, that you feared for your own personal security. We didn't know where to go to get our addresses out out from the webpage. So that kind of processes is lacking, and I will hate to have to experience that again and not know exactly what the steps, what are the necessary steps to keep us safe from crazy people out there. So that will be one one way that the C. 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 should actually be working towards, to better those processes. Um, another thing that I can think of immediately on how the C. 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 can be um making making better better, making it better for us is to develop a a follow-up um training on on complex issues. We we finish a a campaign and we were immediately sent into into training. We spent hours and like two weeks of hours and hours of training and expected to know everything in two weeks, but yet no follow-up. And then comes the T. F., which for me was one of the biggest, you know, one of the most important things that the city does today. And we just get a T. F. um presentation of one or two hours that that wasn't really enough to to um capture that that context, that complex on topic. And again, for me to go and find out who can actually do another presentation for us, that was another, you know, time that I had to put up, put on resources trying to figure out who could help us um get a second presentation, which eventually did happen, but that process was not in place. The same, we're here, we are talking about the budget. I mean, I I'm I do, I do have experience with budget at the office. I have my own budget at home, but this is a little bit different than any to any regular budget. Why not develop a process that can actually teach us on how to manage the budget, how to manage amendments, what is what is the the order of operations on those things? And then I have some more. Oh, preparing us for the next pandemic. Do we really want to be in a position where we are going to be talking down the road about again, do we go live or do we stay on on Zoom? Do we have a hybrid model, whatever? I mean, those are these lessons learned. Do we have, have we, that that should be an agenda item on the C. C. E. C. that we should, that should be already addressed and should be, it should be in progress, if not completed, and how to handle the next pandemic? And I know we're not done with this pandemic, but we all know that we're bound to have another one. So again, another process. And then finally, um, the time that I that I um that I wrote this, we were in the middle of a very, I think it was, actually was due to this um to this um resolution. In the middle of of um, I don't know how to put it, but there was a lot of drama around this particular resolution. Personal attacks were done, a lot of personal grievances happening. Um, for that one, again, I took the time to go to go around and figure out how can, how can we have, what is the process? What processes do we have in place to manage grievances? Just to learn, you know, I went to the um Civil Rights Office, which that wasn't the path to to do so. We, I learned a lot through that process of the which ways to go on that. But once again, the C. C. E. C. will be an amazing tool to make our lives easier if they put a process in place that we can follow when we are, you know, when our personalities get on the way and perhaps we need a moder- moderator or something to to move on from the topic. So I I um, you know, again, going from the lines of what what um Vice President Martin was saying, there's, this gives a lot of room to um to have discussions that are important for the city, but also have discussions for us as a council that we are not having. Um, we have a lot of boards and committees, and those boards and committees are made of experts, and we refer things to those committees based on their expertise. The expertise of this committee should be us. How to manage the council day-to-day business, how to have processes in place that make us make us function better. So I will definitely be voting in favor of passing this resolution as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Figaro call. President Abbas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I share my screen, please?
Uh.
Yes, I can. I can see I have.
I think you should be able to.
Yep, here we go. Can you see this highlighted paragraph?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. So this is T. Fox's report. This is, the exact wording came through T. Fox in this particular report. And I will read first two paragraph. I will skip the other two. It says, "Another glaring characteristic of the current B. C. C. system is its sheer size and complexity as compared to cities of similar size and nature. First, there is no organization chart of the B. C. C. and not all B. C. Cs are listed in the city's Legislative Information Center. As an internal matter, therefore, it was difficult for the task force to even ascertain exactly how many B. C. Cs exist in the city. Next, the task force found that nearly 100 B. C. Cs that are listed in legislate lack clarity, lack clarity of purpose and are subject to policies and rules of procedure that further increases the complexity of the B. C. C. system. For example, B. C. C. topics are often overlap, either making them redundant or unnecessary. B. C. C. do not always keep within their jurisdiction in part because they do not fully understand where their jurisdiction and and another B. C. C. began." So with that, I will stop sharing my screen and speak to that. So the broader issue in front of us is role of B. C. C., and you can also add the Common Council Executive Committee is part of that as well. And how they react, how the refer happen. I see this particular ordinance is really targeting, for political reason, to C. C. E. C. and really going after C. C. E. C. rather looking all the B. C. C. and really following the the core of T. Fox's recommendation. I'm all in favor of efficiency, effectiveness. I'm going to use those words as I heard from my fellow colleague with all due respect. That's all all good, all agree. If we really need to look into all of those, we should look into our overall structures and how we could improve. But here we are, just picked up one uh committee with some examples and and some arguments are understandable. I'm not saying they're all not valid, but most of them, I feel like, is like a political uh targeting, especially when bipartisan communities in 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 the council leadership. Another thing I will say is as per the time I got counsel in council leadership as a council president, uh, we add an additional council, uh C. C. E. C. meeting to accommodate the workload and workflow beside these three, four agenda items about shelter, which are also extremely important for community to provide their input. My my point here is administrative work, looking into legislative work or how I say, like policy work on process, procedure is all important. And and C. C. E. C. should do that, and they are doing it. We are doing it. The chair of the T. Fox reached out to me about the common council meeting as a whole. Uh, I accommodated that. I asked the staff, hey, look into the dates, put those on calendar. Let's have discussion. I never refuse any request. Of course, I will provide my feedback on workload of the staff or workload of the orders and how we could manage, but never refuse, never close any doors, ever. So so we are doing, I'm I'm speaking as a council president. I am doing all my best to accommodate everything as per ask by my colleague. I don't understand why it is necessary to propose an ordinance really targeting one committee but not other. I, at the same time, I really appreciate Alder Foster. His amendment, sorry, the ordinance he proposed, not amendment, is actually create a path forward for all of us to understand all of our B. C. C. How should we do more than putting a hammer on C. C. E. C.? We should collaborate and create a culture and understand and individual orders, how referrals work and how they impact and how we can create efficiency. Let's say for sake of argument, you guys take the referrals back and take community vices also back and really make C. 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 as an admin uh committee to take care of admin work. These issues which were mentioned by uh my fellow order uh in an email about shelter issue and referrals and other referrals to going back in a history, those could be still done by orders. They can still refer it to different committees. Some could argue, well, that the shelter is uh is going to have to develop on a contaminator. Some could argue, well, that the shelter is, is gonna be developed on a contaminated land. So let's refer it to Sustainability Committee. I'm just throwing an example, just say it for argument. You can still send it to Sustainability Committee, you can send to many other committees. The problem here is to really understand how we can create culture. These type of ordinances without having a conversation basically create mistrust, regardless of the intention perhaps is good, but it does not create a path forward of working collaboratively. And that's where the, my issue is. This should be placed on file as the C C E C did. Regarding now, coming back to the question about C C E C role, I said that during C C E C meeting, as well as I'm saying here, I will put an agenda item on C C E C. We could have a robust discussion about the role of C C E C, hash it out those things. Rather than putting a hammer on our head and say, hey, you guys put those things there, that's those agenda item was being referred there. So for those reasons, we do not want C C C to have that power or orders. I'm gonna give you another example. So we have an agenda item which is a city emergency plan. So initially it was introduced without any refer. So as per this ordinance, let's say it is referred to Public Safety Review Committee, just an argument because it's related to safety or finance or something, which means the C C C will never have an opportunity to have that agenda item on C C E C unless on a floor we have extra majority votes. And if you don't have extra majority vote because of either through, because of political reasons or simply the order doesn't agree with you. You don't, that putting that extra majority vote, that's, that doesn't make sense. Why would take that, that, that power away from orders? And all those issues are important. I understand admin issues are important. We have a lot of process to discuss, other issues are also important. Another example here is my own uh, resolution on shelter criteria. It was placed on file by C C E C. I saved council time, didn't debate it. None of us also ordered excluded or debated because through executive committee, we clearly see what the council views are and how we could operate. So executive committee could be used to take some of the load off from common council rather than throwing everything on a common council and debating on the floor. So I will encourage you all, this is, this is the way this ordinance came. That's not the right path forward and please place this on a, on a file. Thanks.
Thank you, President Abbas. Alder Wiheli.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I think much, much has been said and I don't wanna repeat, but I wanna add just some few of mine. And totally, I agree, all of us need efficiency, process, procedure and really a collaborative effort that we as a uh, council need to work together. But I have uh, several concerns about this ordinance. One is the process. The process, as a member of TFOX Committee Member, this was not brought into the TFOX Committee. Uh, we were charged with streamlining the B C C, bring to the council, produce all those duplicate uh, B C C and then come and bring recommendation to the, to the council in term of the B C C. C C C is part of, is an executive committee, but it can be part of the B C C in term of the function of the, of the council. The other thing is when we have new orders in uh, who are just elected, who are going through budget process, who are going through different life and work and life balance. This is not a time to talk about the effectiveness and the efficiency of C C E C. When I look at C C E C, I see so many functions that we wanna change. We wanna add something, we wanna remove something. This will be like President Abbas alluded, we could have a really robust discussion of how we envision this body, how we can be able to be more effective and efficient and serve our community, how we can be able to collaborate, work together, hear each other's voice and respect each other. We don't have that because everyone has different opinions and different uh, items. As a member of the TFOX, I think the, the intent could have an impact. Uh, I would like to uh, in the future, have this a robust discussion of what the C C C looks like, what other, some of the functions. When the orders are really out of this uh, budget pressure, they have the time to discuss and have an input in what that looks like without having unintended consequence. So I will, I will advise my colleagues. Not, I'm not disagreeing with Alda Furman, I'm not disagreeing with Alda, President Abbas. Everything, you know, other my colleagues have said is correct and I agree with them. But today is not the time to approve or vote for this change. We don't wanna go back again and revisit. We, we need to streamline the B C C, we need to look at how, how this body can function for us. Alda Vigor Cole stated, you know, she wish, she, she could have so many other things within the, you know, within this uh, C C C. Those are the kind of discussion we need to have in the future. So I, I will urge my colleagues to put this on file and revisit when we are all of us have the time and the mindset to discuss and have a robust uh, way of uh, looking forward for the future of C C E C. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder, Alder Carter.
Thank you. I, I, I'll be very short. The C C C, C C E C is not an admin committee to teach you how to function as an alder. We had training. We videotaped it so you could go back and look at it, but you can also call um, staff on that. And we have staff in the Common Council Office that can guide you. The importance of the C C E C Committee, and I won't go through what Alder Abbas just said, um, but he, he really summed it up. I think that Alder Wiheli said it best, this is not the time. I think that C C E C Committee asked us to approve this to be on file and I think we should honor that. And more importantly, please register me as a no vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Carter. Alder Bennett.
Okay, so um, I have a few thoughts about this overall. Um, I first wanted to uplift um, what my other colleagues, um, Alda Martin and Alda Figaro Cole were saying, that this is a really, this is an opportunity to expand um, C C E C's scope and expand what we can actually talk about. Um, Alder Figaro Cole, um, or sorry, maybe I shouldn't talk about specific orders. But um, before it was aforementioned how we don't have a process to um, deal for, for when orders are dealing with attacks on themselves. As a person that was a part of that, when um, I had a really horrifying experience um, after the removal of Niggerhead Rock, where I had several people texting my personal phone number, emailing me. I still receive emails and other um, messages on social media. Um, some were to the, to a gravity where people were trigger warning, saying things like, I should, I deserve a niche in my neck and I deserve to be raped and lynched um, and things of that nature. And when that happened, I had no idea where to go to, who to talk to, how to deal with it. Quite frankly, I haven't received any updates on my case related to that. Um, and that's just one example of issues where we don't have a process for how to deal with attacks on ourselves. And that's something that C C E C should be taking up. Um, on the other hand, right now in C C E C, um, frankly, I, I don't perceive this as an attack on one committee, rather on our committee system as a whole. And um, a lot of times during C C C, I'm wondering like, why are we even discussing what we're discussing? For example, we had issues related to houses this issued referred to us that had already been discussed in City County Homelessness Issues Committee. Um, and we had, those people are charged with that specific issue. Um, already gave the referral, the C C C recommendation on those referrals reflected that of um, City County Homelessness Issues Committee. And yet we still had people registering for C C E C and City County Homelessness. Um, and um, I know there is this idea that you can deny referrals um, if you don't want it to go to C C E C. I think that's really disregards how our political system in common council works, where I think that a lot of council members would rather something to just be referred to a committee rather than start a fight um, or an issue on the floor between whether or not it should be referred to a specific committee. Um, on, on the other hand, um, oh, and additionally, um, I don't perceive this as an attack on any one person or any, or any political motives related to it. Um, coun, council, the current council leadership is not going to be council leadership indefinitely. Um, it's, and this change is going to be um, a, a lasting change. Um, an additional issue that we haven't even really ta, talked about in C C E C that we really should be is um, um, panel, or I'm sorry, um, registrants' camera usage during videos. We, we received one, or during public comment, we received one um, informational meeting about that and that was that. We haven't received any updates about it. We haven't even discussed it. When I bring it up, it's always kind, it, it, it seemed to be kind of a runaround about like what to do about it. Um, and, and these process issues are issues that C C E C should be discussing. However, we're always getting caught up and um, put behind schedule with um, referrals that C C C doesn't need to be discussing. So that's why I, I do support um, this change. Um, I think that it, it's will help us with shaping um, the processes that council has and how we um, will take or, and also really expands the scope. It's, I don't perceive it as an attack on any one committee or any one person overall. So I would say vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I, I'm gonna go back and just kind of wipe this slate clean in terms of my first approach. Um, one is the training that was mentioned several times. That will rest with the Chief of Staff and uh, so that is an issue that I wanna um, make sure that I lift up. And the other thing is in terms of, of, of process and we talk about process in um, as it's a fleeting thing, we talk about it when, when it's important to talk about it. But one of the things that, and I'm going to be registered as a no, is is that this has been a very robust conversation. And I'm just wondering, what is the, what, what is the role of the, of the TFOX Committee? And I think that the role of the TFOX Committee is to have these robust conversations that we've had almost forty minutes or thirty minutes, um, because it's now on the floor. I would have requested that such a robust conversation would have happened in committee and it did not. And so the purpose of the TFOX Committee is questionable because once you pull out what you wanna pull out and present, when I said you, when, when items are not discussed robustly in a committee that's designed to do that, then my question is, um, what, what is the, the role and the goal of the TFOX? Is it, is it just to rubber stamp the recommendations? Or is it really designed to look at how to, how to, you know, which committees should be, you know, eliminated, which committees should be redesigned, which committees will get us to the efficiency that we're all talking about? And so I'm, I am really talking about the process. I will not be supporting this because I don't think that the conversation as we're having um, could have been tailored down if it had been presented within the context of the, of the TFOX Committee. So please register me as a no.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. I'm fairly certain we're headed towards a roll call. Uh, Vice President Martin for the second time.
I defer my, my comments. It's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Martin. Alder Halverson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just real quick, um, I was just looking at this and I was trying to put in uh, any other committee meeting in, 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 in the name of it instead of C C E C. What if you put any other committee name in there? E O C, E O C shall have the authority to uh, receive referrals, ordinance, resolution reports from the common council that are not referred to other committees uh, or C C H I C, any, put any committee in there. Does it make sense to have um, a committee that, that would not be referred to any other committee or putting that restriction on it? So I would say, if we wanna have the discussion about eliminating C C E C, we should have that discussion and just get rid of it. Um, but to put this in there to limit it like this doesn't seem to make much sense to me. So that's where I stand on this.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett for the second time.
It's a point of order, we're not eliminating C C E C by this ordinance change, correct?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no further hands in the queue. Is there any further discussion on this item? If not, the motion is to adopt. Um, I've heard enough disagreement that uh, we'll go to a roll call. So all those in favor of adoption, aye. Those opposed, uh, no, as your name is called and the clerk will call the roll.
Alder Carter.
No.
Alder Conklin is excused. Alder Curry?
Yes.
Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Evers, aye. Alder Figaro Cole?
Yes.
Alder Foster?
Aye.
Alder Furman?
Aye.
Alder Halverson?
No.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
Alder Heck?
Aye.
Alder, Alder Lemmer is excused. Alder Martin?
Aye.
Alder Miyazi?
No.
Uh, Alder Vervier?
No.
Alder Viterver?
Aye.
Alder Wihely?
No.
Alder Abbas?
No.
Alder Alboras?
No.
Alder Benford?
No.
Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Nine ayes, nine noes.
Uh, with nine ayes and nine noes, the item fails. And that is the last item on our agenda. Um, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, what was the first name you were calling tonight?
Alder Carter.
Thank you. Um, are there any announcements? If not, Alder Carter, it's to you. Oh, Alder Wiheli Hay first, sorry.
Oh, man.
Alder Wiheli Hay?
Madam Mayor, uh, I don't know if it's the right place, but you know, we lost a very icon person, Colin Powell. And I'd like to just, you know, uh, just take a moment and remember his good work for our country.
Thank you, Alder. It's worth remembering.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alder Carter.
How can I follow that? I move adjournment.
Second. And it's seconded. Uh, is there any objection to recording unanimous fa- uh vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good rest of your evening.